I don't know about the audience.
Yes.
(coughs)
You turn the mic on, yeah?
No, ma'am. Nah, I'll leave him off until you're ready.
I lose my voice.
If everyone will just bear with us for just a minute, we're just making sure that all of our footprints are in place. Thank you. Get started. Commissioner Banks, would you lead us?
All right.
Once again, Father, we're coming forward to give you thanks and bring you praise or status one more time. And Father, if you come in and if your presence is felt in this house on tonight, to help us make your life and death decision flowers in the name, it continues to bless our citizens. We actually stand here for Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay. At this time, I'll call this workshop to order. Week seven, 17th, 2020. And if everyone will join me as we decide a leaving.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, in the US.
On behalf of myself and my fellow commissioners, we appreciate you coming out tonight. We know that it's a cold night. Unfortunately, this facility does not have heat, but I'm sure that that will not be a problem. We've got a few housekeeping things I would like to bring to everyone's attention in how we're going to conduct this workshop tonight. First off, I'm gonna ask Michael to make a few comments on where we are on our current audit and do some clarification. I think it's a courtesy to everyone in the room that that's necessary. That's not what this workshop is about, and we will not be holding questions on that. And next, Colonel Wells is going to give us a presentation as to what has occurred under their watch over the last few weeks. After that, the commissioners are going to be able to ask him questions about his report, and then we're gonna give everyone in the audience an opportunity to ask one question, to which we ask if you come to the podium, you ask your question, and then he will address it. That question will be in relation to his presentation. We'll take a five-minute recess. While Colonel Wells and Sheriff Loach get prepared for the next presentation, and that's gonna be the option of whether or not Crescent City can use the services of the Sheriff's Department. They'll give their presentation. The commission will ask questions, and then we will take public comment. Public comment will be two minutes per person. The permit of your time is not allowed. You'll come to the podium. We do have a timer. And upon the, when it dings, I think, Debs and Bobby, okay, when it dings, well, the next person, please, that's your cue to step up and for the speaker to finish their presentation. At that time, if they have any questions in their comments, then the sheriff or Colonel Wells will address those questions. Those questions will only be related to, again, the presentation and the workshop that we're having tonight. I ask that everybody be civil. I know that there are a lot of emotions. There's a lot of information. There's a lot of misinformation out there. We are trying to do the very best we can to accommodate everyone. We're also trying to do the very best thing that we as commissioners, if you're charged us, to do on your behalf and looking out for your best interest. So I'm gonna ask at that time, Michael, would you please just speak very briefly as to where we are on the audit?
Okay, so right now, maybe just back up a second, Mayor, and start talking about how we got to an audit? So isn't any organization, when you lose a department head or an agency head, you need direct oversight? Police department is just one department we have in this city. So once we lost our police chief, it was necessary and imperative that, without some direct oversight of the department, that someone come in, some authority, to find out where we are. And before Sheriff Loach came in, they came in and did an evaluation of his organization, his agency, to find out where they are on a whole bunch of different criteria. So I want to ask the sheriff's office to come in and do an evaluation of our agency on several items. Not a thorough one, it was a, they would give me a summary on five of the items. One of them happened to be certifications. Each of the five items that they went through showed deficiencies. But the certifications get down to the base level of if our officers aren't certified or their certifications are in question, whether it's their basic law enforcement certification, or any of their equipment they use, if they're not up to date with protocols, or their base certification, that kind of causes a problem, and it causes a liability for us. And myself and the commissioners will not be doing the best thing that we can for the city, if we didn't try to minimize that. So all of the staff was put on administrative leave, was pegged. So, once we helped, with the help of the sheriff's office, the forensic FBLA, they are doing, they will be doing their investigation. I do not have a timetable. I told, I was told, but when they do come in, they will look at everything, and they will give me the results from that. So as of right now, that has not been done. And that's what we are, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Colonel Wells? And Sheriff Loach, too, Senator.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight.
You might have to speak into your, I have to move that one thing, but we have to hold it a little closer to us. Thank you.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here with everyone tonight. I just wanna say before we begin this presentation that I was humbled whenever we were approached about how we could help Crescent City in a time of need. And, you know, the mayor alluded to it earlier. I apologize, I feel awkward with my back standing to the audience, but we're here to help the residents of Crescent City in any way that we possibly can. If that means a partnership, that's fine, that's something that we welcome. If it means continuing to function under the model that we're functioning under now, we're certainly fine with that, too. Crescent City's a special place. The south end of the county is a special place, and your residents here deserve the very best in professional law enforcement services that we can possibly give them. So with that, I've just got a few short remarks that I wanna make. I wanna personally assure everyone here that our intent was never hostile takeover of the Crescent City Police Department. This is merely a conversation that started with Mr. Esposito and Mayor Myers about some perceived deficiencies that they observed, which caused some concern. And that's really what prompted this conversation about what their options were and how to proceed from there. Again, this is merely a discussion that we have. We want input from the residents of Crescent City. We wanna know your feelings. We wanna know what direction you wanna take this in, and do our best to be able to provide those services to you to the best of our ability. At the end of the day, we want what all of you want, and that's to make certain that Crescent City is a safe place to live, work, play, and raise a family. As the mayor alluded to earlier, we have two presentations tonight, and we're gonna ask Colonel Wells to come up. This slide that you see in front of you, some of you may remember from last week, if you were at the meeting, this is kind of a brief overview of the activity in Crescent City since the sheriff's office has assumed primary law enforcement responsibility and answered calls here. So, Colonel Wells?
Thank you, Sheriff, and I just echo the sheriff's thoughts that, you know, that I'm proud and honored to have the opportunity to present here today at the request of the citizens of Crescent City and the city leadership. I know, and some of this is repeated from the last time, we wanted to make sure that everyone had the opportunity to see the same information, and I know there was some difficulties last time, so we'll go back to it very briefly, and some of it is updated. So as I mentioned in the last meeting, through my attendance at previous meetings, I know that the citizens of Crescent City and the leadership have become accustomed to regular updates on the status of law enforcement activity and crime inside the city. So we wish to continue that tradition for the citizens and provide that information. This does include information pertaining to both the sheriff's office and the Crescent City Police Department. Okay. So this slide is like a safety last time. This is a brief overview of crime inside Crescent City. This takes into account the uniform crime report. Those are crimes identified by the FBI as indicators of the status of crime inside the city. You can see the monthly trend as it moves throughout the year of 2020, with an average of three to four crimes monthly with that one outlining month in May. However, that's kind of where you see, hardly see with the lights in here, but there is a trend line inside the graph. That trend line is indicative of a, the current trend is for a slight increase in crime in Crescent City, and that is something that we work to address. The presentation is very similar to the presentation that our district commanders give to the sheriff and I every month as part of our nationally recognized stratified crime reduction strategy, and this just keeps us posted on everything that's going on in particular areas of the county. So gave you a very quick comparison, nineteen versus twenty. You can, you know, it is what it is, and the statistics are what they are, and this is showing that we're on track for a increase in 2020 in Crescent City. Very quickly, the sheriff's office trended over a period of time, showing the downward trend. The reason that I bring this stat up specifically is not as a comparison to Crescent City versus the sheriff's office, because that's not what uniform crime reporting is intended to. It's never to compare one agency against another. It's intended to compare an agency's progress over a period of time. So it's a report card on the sheriff's office. This is, we give a lot of this credit to our adoption of the stratified crime control strategy, a strategy which we have invited the municipalities throughout the county to participate with us on, attend our monthly meeting sessions, and undergo training on how to utilize this strategy. We're proud of its success. That invitation is continuously open to all of our municipal partners to partner with this in the strategy. So what kind of crime occurred in Crescent City? Basically, for the most part, this is crime so far in 2020. It's basically death and burglary, nonviolent crime, with an occasional aggravated assault. Then we had that one outlier, very uncommon occurrence in the earlier days here, where there was a homicide. That homicide is not reflected here because just the way the UCR has that house in a different area with Crescent City, and then we'll move it into the UCR at the appropriate time, when the case is closer to final ending. So we talked about clearance rates. Again, this is part of what the stratified model brings, which we participate in with the state attorney's office, our municipal partners, and all of our agencies that we work with to show you clearance rates. We credit the stratified model with the forty-two point four percent clearance rate for the sheriff's office. You know, I think that, without getting long-winded here, which I have a tendency to do, so throw something at me if I get that right, but I think that this is highly indicative of the situation that exists with a larger agency versus a smaller one. These solvent rates are solely the result of all the additional services and the additional things that happen with crimes after the initial report is taken, that it is just unrealistic and not fair to expect a small agency to be able to provide that level of service. So looking at November one, the current, you give you a snapshot on calls for service. Total calls for service in Crescent City have been two hundred and thirty-five. It's a little more now, this was produced before the first meeting. Of those seventy-three percent, obviously the vast majority handled by your Crescent City police officers. Then it shows the proactive law enforcement, that is activity that is initiated by the officer or deputy sheriff, not called into our communication center. And of that, about eighteen percent of those, I'm sorry, thirty-three percent of those activities were Crescent City police officers, and sixty-seven percent deputy sheriff. So this is really where it gets to the meat and potatoes, and shows you what's going on. Our crime analysts work day in and day out to identify crime patterns, and those patterns are very pervasive in telling us where we should focus our efforts. A pattern may be a series of crimes over an identified period of time that are related to each other by person, type of property stolen, location, method of the crime, you name it. So we began looking at this. We identified our first pattern that we identified in Crescent City, and as you can see, it's 2020, year zero one for Crescent City, and that is a series of burglaries and other crimes where Jeremy Addison was suspected, yeah. So as we worked that, I'm not gonna go through all this, you see the investigative efforts. Again, I show you this, this is the same thing that our detectives and our commanders scheduled, the sheriff and I, as we hold them accountable for rapidly resolving these trends and what they've done in these crimes. So that's what has happened here, as you guys, as we talked about in the last meeting, through the collection of physical evidence, additional video, and interviews. Mr. Addison is sitting in a Putnam County jail with no bond. He is charged in two residential burglaries, one nude charge as an adult, one more as a juvenile. He has multiple juvenile warrants, and he remains there. We also began looking, we began looking back at a previous burglary that occurred with Crescent City, all through the investigation, and using some of the resources that we used to partner with our municipalities, and we believe there are additional charges possibly coming, but he is incarcerated now. The next thing that we wanna talk about very quickly is that crime. This is a crime at six seventeen Magnolia Street where firearms, jewelry, clothing, and cell phones were stolen. It's currently assigned to our property crimes detectives. We've been able to collect additional evidence, conduct additional interviews. Through that, a possible witness has been identified, and the investigation remains active at six seventeen Magnolia Street with Mr. Addison being identified as a suspect. Second crime, and everything I'm showing you is every crime that has occurred in that time period, so you're gonna see just how lucky you are to live in Crescent City, because this is gonna be a short presentation. Very simple crime, but it's kind of trespassing. The suspect was issued a trespass warning for five nineteen North Summit Street in Crescent City by deputy sheriff. Shortly thereafter, the suspect created a disturbance at side of the same location and was sentenced to arrest him. He, by the way, after he was released from jail, a new warrant was received by the sheriff's office to figure to pay child support, so I know the picture's hard to see, but if you know who this gentleman is, we'd certainly like to talk to him. Vehicle burglary, three twelve North Prospect Street. Case was investigated by deputy sheriff assigned to the Crescent City city limits under our current status of assisting Crescent City. This was, and transparency, a delayed response to this call as the deputy sheriff involved in this was on another case at the time involving the inside of Crescent City. Fifty dollars, three knives were stolen from a vehicle. Position surveillance showed a white female entered the vehicle while a male waited in the area. It was assigned to the sheriff's office property crimes detective for follow-up. Since then, this slide is actually outdated as of this morning, as the suspect was identified late last night, yesterday afternoon, and the detectives made contact with her this morning. She was transported to sheriff's office, interviewed, and has been arrested for this vehicle burglary. So that is assault burglary. We went to a discharged firearm case at seven twelve Rocket Range. Don't like my phone ringing, I got nervous, man. Citizen called and reported several shots fired in the area. Crescent City deputies and multiple deputies from, the Crescent City deputies want to sign inside the free limits, and multiple deputy sheriffs from our surrounding zones responded. No suspects remained at the scene. The deputies are identified two vehicles and several persons possibly involved. Crime scene investigation area resulted in recovery of one bullet casing, which is now undergoing forensic examination. Deputies located one of the vehicles involved and summoned it after that vehicle had been struck by gunfire. The vehicle was seized and is currently undergoing forensic examination at the sheriff's office crime scene complex. Theft, two oh five South Summit Street. This is a theft of a cell phone. The deputy assigned to you, city limits of Crescent City, used in collective surveillance footage. That deputy identified the suspect through previous contacts, and with working with the deputies from our surrounding zones, they searched for and located the suspect. The investigation confirmed that he had, in fact, stole the phone from this business, and he was arrested for that. During the investigation, we were determined that he not only stole the phone, but sold that phone, so he's been charged with grand theft dealing in stolen property, and he still has the marijuana in his pocket when he was arrested, possession of marijuana. One oh three North Main Street and five oh four Florida Avenue. This is not a new crime occurrence. This is an update on a long-term problem. So our special operations commander has initiated a long-term problem resolution at his properties. He has met with the residents of five oh four Florida Avenue and gained a considerable amount of cooperation from this gentleman. He, too, shares our desire to reduce or eliminate any criminal activity in this area, and we have a belief set, if not, we're working on picking a date to meet with a resident of Ormond Beach who owns one oh three North Main Street. That owner appeared somewhat unaware of everything that was going on on the property or at least the significance of it, and that just, that commander is working with various agents, various units inside the sheriff's office for a long-term, multi-faceted approach to the issue. Again, you know, like the sheriff said, regardless of the city's decision on which way we go with long-term policing services, we certainly would like to offer assistance and follow through with this through our long-term problem-solving issues, and we all know we had a homicide there this year, the first one in a long period of time in Crescent City, and I think we all share the desire to all share the desire to productively deal with this issue and make that a safe location for everybody. I saw that commander, that's Captain Utter, Special Operations Commander, he was loading his truck with no trespassing signs, and he has gotten approval from property owners to post and enforce that trespassing, and so they are being put up either tonight or in the morning. I think he said he was coming down tonight. So that is, like I say, a snapshot of what's going on in Crescent City to keep everybody informed. I'll entertain any questions anybody has with this, or the sheriff and I with this presentation. Do you want to start with you, Mayor, or the Commissioner?
Commissioner, may I ask you a question? Are you my tibia? You have to speak into it. What, is my mic on? Yes, okay, thank you. Those are the principles of our help. Well, thank you very much. This was a lot of activity, and it's a small town, so those of you listening, we all live close to our neighborhood crime. So thank you. We'll have business there. I do have one question for you about the, or a couple of questions, but one about the forty-two percent resolution rate that Sheriff's Office has.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I saw a couple of questions there. One, how does the Sheriff's Office's resolution rate compare with the national or Florida rate?
That's a great question, Commissioner. If you actually look at the top of the slide, we included that information, and I apologize, the original predictor that we were using didn't predict up quite so high, so you'll see that we actually included the national average for clearance rates is about thirty-one, almost thirty-two percent, contrasted with our forty-two and a half percent clearance rate. And again, that credit goes to the hard-working men in the community, seeing the green light colors up and following the streets, and also largely is part of due to our new crime control strategy that we adopted a couple of years ago.
Okay, that's right, and I'm sorry, I missed that little part at the top.
No worries.
Thank you. And as well, and without going into a lot of detail, if we would choose to keep the Crescent City Police Department, are there strategies that we could use to work with the Sheriff's Office or have additional training to improve our count clearance rate?
So we have actually invited all of our municipal partners, including Crescent City, to join together with us in this crime control strategy. I will tell you that it's very labor-intensive and requires a significant amount of effort and resources dedicated to it to make it work, but yes, certainly, we would welcome any municipality who would like to partner with us in this strategy.
Okay, sounds great, and thank you for your work on this ongoing little crime rate we have here. And just so I'm very clear on this, and everybody is, the individual crimes that Colonel Wells detailed, those are since you've been patrolling at the beginning of December?
Yes, that's right. That's, those are from the ones that Colonel Wells reported on, were activities from December fourth to current.
Some of the crimes occurred before, a few of those before, but this is all current activity that we've worked on. You know, just to reiterate what the sheriff said there, we don't believe in making a habit of talking about crime rates in the county versus the city. The fact of it is, the county together makes up Putnam County's crime rate, so the Sheriff's Office certainly encourages the municipalities to participate in the crime control because the slower the municipalities can drive their crime, the better we as a county work as a whole. When people talk about wanting to move here, start a business here, they don't ask what the crime rate is beyond incorporated forces or in Crescent City or in Cali, but they ask what they did in Putnam County. So it only works really well with that partnership.
Right, and as well, I would say, I think that some of the shooting or whatever that occurs is not always by our residents, though I'm sure it goes both ways.
You're absolutely right.
The perpetrator may commit crime outside city limits.
Sure.
And vice versa.
Criminals, unfortunately, never would respect jurisdictional boundaries.
No, okay. That's the first one. Is that it? Is that all? Okay. Do we have any citizens that have a question that they would like to ask at this time? Okay. Diane, if you want to step up, please, introduce yourself, give your address. Remember, we're keeping it, please, to one question.
Diane, that's three oh four Chestnut Street, Crescent City. I'd like to know the link to where you got the information for the clearance rates, those percentages where they come from?
Department of Law Enforcement.
Okay, I wonder on all of those crimes, are there statistics?
There's additional reports, and then the national average is based on the National Institute of Justice website, and the Department of Law Enforcement has clearance rates. And some, the reports can be cumbersome to read, but certainly they have to, you sit down with me and show you where those come from. Shows by arrest or by exception.
I'd like to get that some more from you. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any other questions from anybody? Yes, ma'am?
I own multiple properties, one of which is further out on three oh eight and then thirty acres, one which is in town, both are Crescent City. However, and this is a question for Sheriff. When you're talking about the rate, clearance rate, the question I have is I had a couple incidents out on the three oh eight property where the sheriffs were dispatched. In one instance, I had a gentleman that had worked short-term, short-term, a couple of days while his background check had originally checked out. There was something with the person that runs my background check that made that person question the license plate, and she reran it after he worked two days. Found out that he actually, in fact, didn't have a clean record, and he was told that because he had dislodged a clean record and he had felonies that were in his past, that he was not going to be able to be on my property to buy a foster children. Consequently, during those two days he was working, he had also gone out to my thirty-acre farm just over by Eagles Nest Airport. Shortly thereafter, one of the agricultural workers that stays out there in a trailer called me screaming that they had tried and called nine-one-one, that someone had tried to steal a twenty-four foot boat off my property, and that it was the guy that they recognized as being the one that had worked for those two days. The officer responded, talked to them, and before I could get there, had determined that there was nothing I could do because there was not a, they didn't video. Now, they firsthand identified the guy. He never made a report out, nor did he contact me. So if you don't report crime or take a report, I'm sure that that changes the rate of which that true rate is. So my question is, and it's not just, it's more than two times that that has happened, where a report wasn't made on something that had happened. In one instance, somebody broke into a trailer out there, and no one was living out there at the time, and I came out there and was hit with a box bin by a guy that I called for an assault with, same thing. There was no report made.
Excuse me, excuse me. Can we keep it related to the presentation? I asked everybody to relate the clearance rate. So my question, and I understand, but I have to clear on track. I mean, obviously, that's going to make a difference, how the rates are. Okay, thank you.
Sure, so I'll be, I'll be. Yes, I'll be happy to address those concerns. Unfortunately, I don't know the incidents that you're speaking of, so I can't really speak intelligently about those, but if you'll give me an opportunity afterwards, I'd like to have a sidebar conversation with you about those superficial incidents you're referring to, so that we can take a look at those and be fully informed before we have a discussion about it. Specifically with regard to the clearance rate, the clearance rate that you're seeing reflected here is strictly related to UCR reportable crimes, so that's the crimes that are reported to the Department of Law Enforcement and to the Federal Bureau of Investigation who compiles the UCR data, not only for the state but nationwide as well. We are required, because we participate and are the recipient of multiple state and federal grants, to report UCR statistics. There are municipalities here in the county, Crescent City is not one of them, that does not report UCR crimes. So there's, you know, there's a multitude of different factors there, but again, I can't speak to your specific situation because I don't know any of the details, but I'll be happy to have a conversation with you following the meeting.
I'm just wondering, just having your report.
Sure.
My question, this is back to you, ma'am, is at any given time of day, we have a minimum of two supervisors on duty, sometimes as high as five or six. Did you reach out to the supervisors to discuss why we didn't write a report, or your concerns?
I have to just, I'm 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 just, I'm
and even some of the cases that the Crescent City Police Office served. And I think that it's, uh, it's a disservice to them to, uh, to say that they didn't have any effort or put forth any effort in, uh, you know, the, the, some of his, uh, previous cases. Um, but yet he was still out terrorizing the, uh, the citizens. I certainly don't want to get into, uh, you know, a, a, a back and forth manner about who did what, but, um, the cases are what they are and fortunately, he's in jail now and not out terrorizing the residents anymore.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions?
Just, just as I like to, ma'am, you know, one of the things that the sheriff mentioned earlier, and I just want to reiterate that is, please, I don't think that we're going to make any progress tonight if we make this a PCS though versus a CCPD conversation. This is not it. We're partners, we're down here to do everything we can to help. Certainly, the Crescent City officers have worked very hard with this young man. We all know the challenges of dealing with youthful offenders. I supervise the state attorney in that. He will reiterate, it is a challenge to deal with youthful offenders. The intent was not to hold Crescent City responsible, uh, but the fact that he was still on the street, it was simply to announce that he has been arrested and is held in jail with no bond.
Thank you. Yes ma'am, do you have a question?
Um, there's a, there's a short answer.
Okay, do you want to introduce yourself? Your address?
Um, my name is Galicia, um, 762 Georgetown Avenue, Crescent City Florida, 6012. Hold on, my name is Galicia. Um, Galicia, much, 762 Georgetown Avenue, Crescent City Florida, 32112. I'm a local DJ, if you guys ever want to.
Thank you, thank you so much.
All right, so the first question is, I wanted to know, like, if the sheriff does come and take over, um, how much is it going to, like, cost with that coverage?
So like, do. Okay, that, we'll get to that after the next presentation, yes ma'am. This is, this question here right now is just in regards to the first part of the presentation.
Just the first?
Yes ma'am. Is your second question in regards to that also?
Um, I just want to know, like, the response time for, like, Baker Act patients?
The response time to the Baker Act patients? Do you want to address that now or would you like to wait until after your next presentation?
I think both of, both of those questions would be best answered because we're going to cover some central portions of that in the end of that.
Okay, so you get a chance to get up and introduce yourself again. Thank you. Any other questions, or the gentleman, yes sir, would you please come forward?
Uh, I'm Mayor Joseph N'Gala from Pomona Park. My, I don't want to be involved in what you're doing in, in your city, it's a problem for you guys, but I'm perceiving one that's happening for me. My understanding is you started coming here full force on December fourth. Uh, my councilors allowed me to pay for deputies to take care of Pomona Park, besides what you already do. So we pay for hours on overtime basis, thirty dollars an hour. I checked with my town clerk before I came here tonight. She told me I have not had a report from the sheriff's department for any hours worked since December fourth, which means since you've been helping Crescent City, I have no problem with that. But I can't get the help that I've been paying for up to a thousand dollars a month.
Okay. Can, um, uh, uh, thank you very much, but we need to keep it to this workshop and, and presentation, but thank you, and I'm sure the sheriff will work that out with you.
But if you should come to me some other thing about the address tonight?
Yeah, that's not part of this presentation, but we so appreciate you bringing that very simple. Hey, do we have any other speakers? No other speakers? Okay, at this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess. That does not mean go play out on the playground tonight.
Because it's going to be mentioned here in a few minutes, is the relationship with Pomona Park. So Pomona Park's relationship with the sheriff's office as far as that goes, we handle the calls for service inside the city limits of Pomona Park 24/7 with our same deputy sheriffs that are already on duty. So they may be coming from Alaca, Crescent City, you name it. There are certain times of the week where Pomona Park offers our deputy sheriffs an off-duty range to patrol the city. So just to be clear, if the deputies don't take the detail, uh, for whatever reason, then it's not an unpaid service, the deputy wouldn't get paid if he wasn't there. So there's no change of money unless the deputy accepts the two-hour off-duty detail.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay. Thank you.
If y'all.
Okay, yeah, we might be, yeah, so might.
That way you can actually walk around and face the people, what's up you?
Okay, I'll, uh, I think maybe a good idea.
Y'all still placing that once a week?
I don't know. I'll be detailed with your discretion, that's what I'm here saying.
Oh, yeah, the shop is set up between.
Right.
And you guys.
Correct, I just didn't have any.
Yeah, we're probably.
The shop that we saw on the.
That's on that, so I think you're placing that one.
He comes, he comes, he comes from six.
I said, well, I have to clarify.
He comes from the store, he comes from the store.
I've got that detail posted on the.
So Jared Livinggood is back there on the corner.
Maybe they haven't turned it into us. That's the only way I know, is if I'm paying. I don't know.
I just want to see it on the. And every detail that's come out of it. Have this. To be more supportive. Let's see, I've got, I've got the third. I can buy it by me saying there's no other detail posted. That means the count hasn't.
Are we going to give out something? Something? There's a four-hour detail here, one, one day, six hours, one to the store.
Oh, here, here.
Yeah, I said, I said.
Okay, so we have a table. We're going to be setting this up. What is that? Do you need a work tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to get your. Like I said, everything will come with the bill. All right? I love it. That's how I do it. Yes, we got the seventh. Forty-third, forty-four. They, the sheriff takes his nineteen hours, thinking says, I'll allow four hours to wait for the secret kind of state. So what else?
Call the seating back order.
Everybody does, could you remind people that if they're going to wear a mask, they should wear it properly? I see a lot of masks that aren't over people's noses, maybe they don't know they're clipped down.
Everybody would take a seat, we're going to start back up again. I want to remind everyone that of course, we're still working and trying to figure out a way through this COVID. I appreciate you being very respectful of, of your seating arrangements that we had to do tonight. Um, also, it's very important that you keep your mask on, uh, just in protection of both you and your neighbor. So at this time, we're going to ask both Colonel Wells and Sheriff Loes that they would come forward for the second part of your presentation.
Mayor, I do have just, uh, one brief, uh, point that I'd like to bring up to address.
Okay.
Uh, just for the sake of transparency, for those who are receiving in the audience, uh, who heard the comments that were made by Mayor N'Gala on Pomona Park. So during the break, we actually had an opportunity to have a sidebar conversation with him. Senator Rose, who's my director of law enforcement, was actually able to access that information electronically. And just for clarification, um, there were Pomona Park details that were posted and filled on December third, ninth, seventeenth, and to in the future on the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth. So they are getting that service that they're receiving. Apparently, there was perhaps a miscommunication from the mayor and the city.
Okay, amazing, that is positive.
Yes.
Thank you very much for making that clarification.
Okay, Colonel Wells, you'd like to come, I hope you continue?
Again, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. This is, uh, the exact same presentation last time, other than we will go through it in far less detail and much quicker to allow the citizens ample opportunity to have their voices heard. Um, uh, Mayor, Commissioner, if you need, you have any questions while we're going, don't, don't hesitate to slow us down. Again, you know, this is all about exactly what it says, the same wording that was up there as we began last time, is that we are trying to find a way, uh, between the sheriff's office and the leadership of Crescent City on what a successful partnership between Crescent City and the sheriff's office would look like, so that we may provide exceptional law enforcement to our community. There are many options that exist. Uh, this slideshow is designed just to give some ideas and to spark the conversation to see where we go from here. As we learned recently, and as we'll continue to learn, especially, um, as our world and nation changes, the demand on law enforcement and the accountability our citizens expect of law enforcement, uh, in addition to, uh, the, the standard that's demanded and all of the challenges and, uh, and leads forward that, uh, that law enforcement is taking, it places an almost insurmountable burden on small law enforcement agencies. So the question is, like we talked about before, what can we do, uh, to have a very successful partnership with Crescent City? So, you know, this was a conversation last time, not going to go down, you know, on each one. Basically, you know, one way or another, whatever that partnership looks like, certainly the citizens of Crescent City have something to gain through a partnership. What city wouldn't benefit from a partnership between different governmental agents? You know, uh, these, these slides that you saw last time and that show up here just show that while through the noblest of efforts of the Crescent City police officers and the leadership of Crescent City to provide exceptional law enforcement, the world has moved, especially this country, has moved to a point where that's almost impossible for small agencies. And that's why we spent some time talking about some of the services, uh, that come with a partnership with the sheriff's office and however that looks. Many of these services are already provided to the citizens of Crescent City. That's not the intent of the slide. The intent of the slide is just to give everyone around the, the very, uh, objective view of, uh, you know, what's your sheriff's office is up to every day in and out. And that includes inside of municipalities and outs. You know, youth services was a thing that we talked about last time, and you know, the, the question begs to be answered is, well, why don't, you already provide these youth services in Crescent City? Well, the answer to that is, of course, we do. And the answer to all these other wraparound services that came up last time, are we as citizens of Crescent City not eligible for those as it currently stands? Well, of course you are. The sheriff is the sheriff of every citizen in Putnam County and bears a responsibility to every citizen in the county. The point of the conversation was, is to, i- if what measure are the citizens of Crescent City able to take advantage of, of these services? How fluid is the transition from what happens in the field to what happens down the line with youth services, detectives and stuff along those lines? It's never our intention to assert our efforts, um, inside any crime or any case, so we often let our municipalities request this when needed, and, uh, sometimes that creates the disconnects that, that we see. So whether our partnership includes nothing more than a better line of communication on how we can help give these services to the citizens of Crescent City in expedient manner, so be it, that's what the conversation should be. Again, of course, you use these services in Crescent City, they're just more of what a full service law enforcement agency looks at, looks like, and they're just more of ways that, uh, we can work together. You know, maintaining law enforcement officers and attracting law enforcement officers is certainly a challenge in today's world. And again, the, you know, the, this is just what our law enforcement officers in the field deserve, whether or not they're deputy sheriffs or city police officers, they, they deserve extensive training. They deserve a chance to further their education, to be part of career development programs, to have their mental health and their resilience they looked after. They deserve opportunities to advance. Who wants to come into this career at twenty-two, twenty-three years old, uh, as a patrol officer and still be a patrol officer when they retire twenty-five years later? They deserve those opportunities, uh, to move around agencies and learn things. They deserve support as they move throughout, whether that support is managing their fleet or making sure their radios are working, or have human resource sections there to manage them through FNLA, attorneys available 24 hours a day. These are things that law enforcement officers deserve, these are things that those officers need or deputies need in order to provide a good service to the city. But I think you will agree that this is an insurmountable, um, this is a mountain that just can't be climbed by some small cities, so there's got to be some way to partner to bring this to Crescent City. You know, we talked about this last time, and certainly Crescent City is, by many, considered me one, to be the gem of Putnam County, sorry for my friends in Alaca, it just is. Crescent City has a unique history and it deserves to maintain that history and to have personalized law enforcement services in the city and, uh, however that may look at the end. You know, here's where it boils down, in my opinion, I think that, um, you know, obviously everybody wants to rid themselves of challenges, and these are some of the challenges that lie ahead for small police departments, as we see throughout the country. And Mayor Commissioners, I provided you, we provided you that extensive study, um, done about the benefits for the citizens, the officers and the leadership of cities when they partner, because these are some of those insurmountable chores or paths that lie ahead, some of those mountains that just can't be climbed by small cities, and those are things that happen. It's nobody's fault, it's just the condition of being a very, very small city when you're trying to go at it on your own. So there's a way to not go at it on your own, however that looks, to help laps and coverage, um, lack of resources, uh, uh, you know, lack of training. Sometimes, uh, when you only have a single le- layer of leadership, what happens when that leadership's not there, either on vacation or leaves the job. Um, it's hard to provide this amount of training, uh, on your own. So, you know, again, these are just, uh, just ideas of challenges that lie ahead for every ultra-small law enforcement agency in the country. And while the sheriff said, and I'll stop here, uh, well, as you know, the sheriff obviously said very eloquently, uh, that it is not an intention to, to do any type of takeover. The citizens of Putnam County as a whole and the sheriff's office benefit is whoever is working Crescent City is working it effectively. So whether that's Crescent City officers or it's our deputy sheriffs, the question will only be tonight, and where I hope the discussion goes is, how can we help? So there's been some discussion on, well, what does it look like if we just use deputy sheriffs inside the city limit, the question that was asked of us. Again, yes, there is a cost that's associated with that. If you choose to participate, for example, just throwing out a thought, if you choose to participate like Pomona Park and allow our deputy sheriffs that are already working in each district of the county to answer your calls with no guarantee of around-the-clock services, that, so that, that service is great. We'll answer it with the current deputy sheriff. They might be coming from Alaca or Satsuma, um, but we'll do the absolute best we can. Um, you know, the, uh, the zones in the county are about, uh, some of them approaching two hundred square miles, um, of course, a lot of that's rural, um, so that, that's the way the county operates, that's what the citizens of the rural parts have come to expect and come to live with. However, usually citizens and municipalities demand much more service, and they demand those police officers or deputy sheriffs that are within an hour from their home at any given time of the day and can be there within a minute or two. If that's the type of service, and the question that's asked, what does that type of service call? Well, that type of service would cause us to have to hire five deputy sheriffs, and there's some costs associated with that. These are very initial thoughts on costs, these are certainly, uh, things that can be discussed and go from there, but just to give you an idea, it is a moderate price savings, but not much. We estimate that over a total of three years, it'd be about a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars of savings, uh, to the city of Crescent City and to our taxpayers who are paying for redundant services. Again, um, I hope this, uh, sparks some discussion here tonight, some beneficial, um, discussion, some, uh, discussion like, uh, between neighbor to neighbor in Putnam County about how we can do better in Crescent City to support our citizens, and if that's the will of the board, how to support your police department, how your police department can help us. So with that, I turn it over to the sheriff for any questions or any comments you might have, and one last time, thank you for the opportunity and the invitation.
Thank you. Do you have to ask you any questions?
On our last meeting, uh, commission meeting, uh, this year, we learned back to five men's. Now, is that going to be two men's per shift, round the clock?
Commissioner, it makes up, really depends on what the will of the commission is. The proposal that we submitted is just that, it's a proposal and it can certainly be modified, uh, as the, as the, uh, needs of the city, uh, that need to be met. Um, but the proposal was initially to have, uh, five deputy sheriffs to provide coverage in the city on the streets of Crescent City 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Uh, that would actually allow for one person on shift at any given time, um, plus the added benefit of a sergeant who's 24/7, a lieutenant, and the district commander who receives those deputies, plus the added benefit of having in excess of twenty deputy sheriffs that work in the each district of the county, which encompasses Crescent City. Um, so those five would provide coverage, uh, that would be augmented by those that I just mentioned, and then the fifth would actually provide additional coverage during peak hours, so that during times of high call volume, you could have more than one deputy on the streets.
Because every one of these major points, it bothers me when our police department, that we don't have but one officer at night, that's kind of dangerous, and that bothers me. So that's why I wanted you to explain about the five officers. So you're saying that we would have mainly one officer on at the time, plus the Roman officer, which might would be sergeant or whoever, Roman down on the south end?
Yes, sir. So you'll have, uh, that, that one officer, plus that additional fifth officer that we would utilize during, uh, peak hours, yes, sir. Um, plus then the added benefit of having, uh, sergeants, lieutenant, captain, and all of those other, uh, deputy sheriffs to, uh, supplement them.
Okay, now, peak hours, what's your peak hours?
Well, that's something that we would have to evaluate, uh, so that would require a comprehensive, uh, call analysis study, uh, within the jurisdictional confines of Crescent City for us to identify those periods of time whenever you see a, a higher volume of calls.
So basically, what you're saying is we're going to have one guy.
All right, maybe I can move up a little bit. So basically, what you're saying is, um, we're going to have one guy between 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM, and then a guy between 6:00 PM and 6:00. six p.m. and then a guy between six p.m. and six a.m. with a rover kind of in between?
Yes, that would overlap those shifts and provide additional coverage during peak hours, like I was talking to Commissioner Banks about.
Okay. I guess you didn't understand, I didn't quite understand that. I was thinking that we were going to get five officers every day, you know, twenty-four-seven. And that's just not the case.
No, that would, I dare say that would probably triple or quadruple.
Well, I just want to give them a brain.
No, I understand completely.
And another thing is, I know we've kind of mentioned a substation down here, but having a substation in the east Palaca or southern Putnam County, would that benefit the other areas such as Georgetown, Palaca, Timona Park?
Yes, it most certainly would. I'm sure you're probably familiar with the substation we had in Satsuma for a period of time. Unfortunately, that really looks to them and we later found out that it was actually part of the road landing project for seventeen. So, we weren't able to occupy any longer. We actually looked for some space here on the school campus just to the south of us a little. Unfortunately, it hadn't been touched since circa World War II. And there were a number of issues that we would have had to address, not least of which was access to mitigation. And it was just cost prohibitive for us to occupy that space. But what was important to us was to co-locate all of our district offices on the campuses because that was immediately on the heels of Barker, Sonnenberg, Douglas, February fourteenth of two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, now, that kind of leads into my next question. The police officers getting assigned to Crescent City, does that include the people that are there, or is that them, the people that are at the school, or are they a separate issue?
No, those would actually be as an additional adjunct in some of the services that Colonel Wells talked about with our U three force unit that we're already providing a benefit of as a benefit to the residents of Crescent City. What it would allow them to do is to have a place where they could stop and periodically attend it a few. And yes, as like we discussed very briefly in the last meeting was an opportunity if we chose to partner to occupy the current police department and use that as a substation, if you will. Under the proposal, we'd actually propose having a clerk that was there five days a week during normal business hours where citizens could come in and request police supports. And you're right, it would be an added benefit not only to the residents of Crescent City, but also to the surrounding areas and south of them.
So, in South Putnam, approximately every day, twenty-four-seven, about how many of you guys wandering around, how many are wandering around? How many sheriffs are really kind of out there?
Oh, gosh. No less than, if you include the supervisory staff, no less than six or eight.
And the average time is all six or eight or just up past jump street. How long would it take them to get down here to Crescent City? Because I know a lot of people are very concerned about that. They feel it's going to take thirty to forty-five minutes to get from Palaca or get from north Putnam County to here, that it's going to take nine to ten hours of time. And so, I guess where I'm going with this is are these people really going to be kind of assigned to South Putnam?
I give you my word and under the, you know, the situation of this proposed contract, that we will have twenty-four-hour continuous coverage within the jurisdictional confines of Crescent City.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner DeVito. Yes, I have a couple of questions about the response time. I just want to clarify on that. I mean, my understanding when any municipality contracts with a sheriff, you get the deputies that you contract for, correct?
That's right.
So, I think you said earlier, there is normally a different response time for a municipality that has its own officers, whether they're contracted officers that are contracted to be there or they're directly employed by the municipality because they're covering that smaller municipal area, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Right, so, for example, if I live out in Georgetown or Cleveland, I get the services of the deputies that have to cover that larger unincorporated area, that's many miles. But if I live in Crescent City, and hopefully there aren't two crimes going on at once, or just like with the fire service, we can call out to assist. But normally, if we contract for a deputy, that our response time should be comparable to what we have now, would you say that is correct?
That is a very accurate statement. And I can speak to response times in the unincorporated areas of the county just a little bit. You know, whenever we receive calls and they're all free on by our communications operators and then assign a priority level, so obviously priority one call takes precedence. And typically, our response time in the unincorporated area of the county, because it's such a hard geographic area to cover, usually averaged around sixteen to seventeen minutes. In a small municipality like Crescent City, I would think that it's some reason we have to expect, you know, depending on where the deputy is and what time of the time of, a three to four, maybe five minute officer's response time.
And I have a couple of questions. What is about the substation? I do deserve that although under the contract proposal, which I understand is preliminary and this would all have to be worked out in a contract, that we right now are being charged for the substation. But it would seem to me reasonable if we did contract for the sheriff that after the first year, perhaps the sheriff would bear the cost of maintaining that substation?
So, when you say being charged, I'm not sure that I'm...
When you look at the numbers in the proposal, if on the Crescent City side, we keep the utilities and whatnot. In other words, we keep all of the, what you would call the...
We continue to maintain.
Right, yeah, sure. You and I had a discussion about that the other day because she's specifically speaking of the fifty-five hundred, sixty-five hundred and one that happened there.
The electric and that's all.
Right, and we, you know, as we talked the other day, that I thought you made a valid point and I told you that, that I thought that the sheriff could stand, could benefit some for the use of that office. So, that's probably a point we need to have a conversation.
Those are all things that, you know, that we can certainly discuss if we choose to move forward or whatever, as we negotiated.
And on the other side, if we did not contract for the sheriff, it was my understanding that under superment, other agencies were invited to take rest breaks. So, is it possible if we did not do the full contract, that we could make an arrangement that would be mutually beneficial, that was not necessarily twenty minutes or less?
Yeah, that's, you know, that's something that we can certainly have a discussion about.
Okay, so certainly, I think there's already, and been an indication to deputies and the higher school, there's details to be worked out. And also, there's an issue with the record clerk, Colonel Wells and I talked about that.
Yes.
But I don't know if the fifty thousand dollars is on the right column and there's issues about, we wouldn't want to double pay. But that's, that's a detail I think that would be worked out.
Sure, nor would we expect you to. And what Commissioner DeVito was referring to is some preliminary discussion about if we did move forward to partnership with the city, perhaps the city keeping control of the record clerk, that obviously that cost would then transfer back over into Crescent City budget and would be, we would deduct that from the cost of the proposal.
Right, because Colonel Wells and I talked about, he said we wouldn't necessarily need a full record clerk here and the person in that position that we would be paying report does other things besides law enforcement.
Correct, as I understood it, there were some sharing of duty there.
Right, so, we might actually, the way this works out, when I look at it, the administrative assistant at the police department now does some functions by a bit of her time, would basically really gain that time because other people in the sheriff's office would do those functions, keeping track of the trainings and things that would be done in Palaca. She does things like she processes permits and that kind of thing. She does some things that the city would still need, but we might actually gain that time.
Yes, and that's, you know, that's certainly something that's worth discussing. And Colonel Wells and I talked about that very briefly earlier, this is a point that you just brought up, that there's a substantial amount of time in her spend doing other functions, perhaps ancillary to her, what her title is or primary role is with the city. So, you may gain the added benefit of that by keeping that purpose of this and all.
Right, because human resource is things that she does now would be the, somebody else's job.
That's correct, yes.
The, just to the citizens in the last part of our conversation, really, we talked about that the one thing that we would really like this person to do, whether she or he's an administrative assistant for the city or a clerk for us, is to be accessible with citizens to give out crime reports and crash reports and in public records they need. I think you could help me and educate me on how much this person does that is not police department related. And certainly, we would not need that time from her. And like you say, all of the stuff as far as the travel that she processes, the training records that she knows, training that she arranged for human resource, medical aid act, vacation, that type of stuff would all just transfer to our current staff in Palaca and that's all through that time.
Thank you. Right now, we have five officers, although they're taking a little vacation right now, but we have five, so would you want to give them any coverage with the five that we had talked about with the contact, correct?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, everybody's in our, we're not losing someone. It was going in its direction.
Yes. Thank you for clarifying that.
Commissioner DeVito, I'm going back to just move this right in front of my mouth here, I'm never going to be a singer. We do have five officers. And let's say if we go and go to contract and contract with you, what would you offer the five officers that we have? You know, there's an awful lot of them that are very well-known here in Crescent City. Sure, if the sheriff's department offered to bring them into the county and keep them somewhat here in Crescent City, that would be, you know, most agreeable. So, what is it that you would be able to offer those guys to possibly?
Certainly, that's a great question. And we talked, if you recall, we talked about that very briefly in the last meeting. With those officers, the five officers that you have now, I would encourage them to apply with the sheriff's office and give them my assurance that we would offer them preference as far as hiring, move them to the front of the line, if you will, and provided that they can pass the background investigations and ease of minimum qualifications, we would welcome them with open arms.
I know that's been one of the, that's been one of the concerns that a lot of people have shared, is that they like the familiarity. You know, it's still about their actual problems. There was a concern that was brought to my attention that they like the fact that if they have a situation, and I just, I spoke to Colonel Wells about this a little bit last evening, that they have, they like the fact that if they have a situation going on and they can call an officer on their cell phone. And he shared with me the concern and the process that needs to take place. And that was just something I, I was talking to him last night, that maybe he could go through how that works so that everybody has a general understanding, those here in the audience and those on Zoom and YouTube, that the importance of contacting the sheriff's office through their dispatch, the protection that that entails. So, could you speak to that?
Sure, yeah, actually, either one of us can. I'll be happy to speak to it and then if Colonel Wells has anything he'd like to add. I understand the, you know, the convenience of being able to pick up the phone and call a police officer or deputy on their personal phone. But I want to tune in on something that I just said, personal phone. We create a very bad precedent and actually put these officers in great peril if we're calling them directly for calls for service. I just want to go through a scenario with you. If an individual calls and any one of us in here calls in and reports a burglary at our house or to one of our vehicles and if they want to give the dispatcher a description of the suspect, you know, a white male wearing a black t-shirt, blue jeans and yellow panties, that conversation is forever memorialized and is available for court purposes. When we put our officers or deputies in a very precarious situation, if they take that call themselves without going through the communications center and there's no recording, what happens if that person isn't available to testify or is unwilling to testify in court? We lose that criminal case. And in addition to that, whenever we're calling officers or deputies on their personal phones and generating a call for service, we're actually creating a public work, or a public record and creating a significant burden for that deputy or officer to have to maintain those call logs indefinitely until the destruction period has passed.
And that's exactly what we talked about. You know, if that call for service, if that telephone call resulted in an officer taking any law enforcement action, that call is public record. And that inability to produce that places the government, the governmental bodies in significant, you know, jeopardy. And I think, you know, my wife might be watching this on YouTube or on Zoom and she'll laugh at this and I think I told you this, that if I watch one more episode of Andy Griffith show, she's going to strangle me. But that, I would love to go back to those days and tell all the time, if I could go to work with one hand laid, second my boot with no gun, workout problems the way they did, that would be great. Today's society demands more. And today's society requests that law enforcement be trans, very transparent and that society has a right to ask us, what was the content of that phone call? Why did you respond here? Who was your caller? And all of that stuff, it's just the law. And that's the way that has to be done. If the citizen wants to ever talk to one of our deputy sheriffs on the phone, absolutely no problem. All they have to do is call the communications center, we'll pass the deputy out to them, they can talk for the whole shift. And we have a record of that call, that's just the requirement to law enforcement in twenty-four.
Okay, and I think that's, you know, that's the concern, it's the familiarity. You know, they don't want to lose that. And so, in discussions, I know you'd also said that should we do something with the sheriff's department, that you would ensure that we had the regulars, that, you know, that you would assign people here, that everybody in the community would get to know them personally, they would have that interaction with them, so they would, they would then develop that familiarity.
Absolutely, I think that's, I think that's incredibly important if we decide to partner in making this a successful venture, not only maintaining and preserving the identity of those deputies that are assigned to Crescent City, but also, just as you said so eloquently, that familiarity that everyone develops and those professional relationships that we build with the community.
I want to clarify one thing about which I was talking about.
Wait, just a little down the station.
Yes, I'm glad you brought up the issue of people wanting to be able to call the officers directly on their cell phone because that needs to be addressed. But I just want to clarify, it's my understanding under the last police chief, that it was not, it was a policy of the chief and the police department to put everything through dispatch. I don't want people to get the impression that recently we had a different policy, but it was something that they were trying to have to educate people on.
Absolutely, but I was, what I was referring to is that a lot of...
Oh, yeah, I agree.
A lot of our residents still don't understand that. We needed some clarification. And right now, all of our calls have been going through the sheriff's dispatch for some time, haven't they? We needed some clarification, and right now, all of our calls have been going through the sheriff's dispatch for some time, haven't they?
Yeah, that's right.
Right, but you're, you know, you're absolutely right. People think that they can call, but they're really not supposed to. And that's the very, very important, yes, so thank you.
Commissioner West? I wanna go in a little deeper direction. I'm really excited, if we go with the sheriff's office, that we can go on the Florida retirement system. We have our own system worked out with the Florida retirement system. For officers, it is much, much better. Also, we have two officers who are working to get their, you know, I'm not doing a lot, justice. And if they, you told me, if they work a year, then they're eligible to have two courses per semester paid for.
Yes, we actually do have a tuition reimbursement program now for the first time in the fifth year of the sheriff's office. We started about two years ago, and it does pay all of those costs with the exception of books.
Books and the twenty dollar online fee.
Books and the, is the twenty dollar.
Well, I didn't have that as a teacher, and that would be a big deal. Because my college did not have to owe that hard amount of money.
Certainly. You bring up two very important points as well. As I understand it right now, insurance for police officers that work in Crescent City is extraordinarily expensive. I wanna say it's somewhere in the neighborhood of eight hundred dollars a month. I'm not sure if that's individual or family coverage, but one of the benefits that your officers would realize if they were coming to work for us is that we actually pay for the employees' insurance. We cover, we cover that monthly premium for them. And for a very small amount of money, we're able to provide family coverage, and then the ability for the employees to tailor their, their insurance to suit them best. We actually have several plans that they can choose from, depending on what their individual health needs are that they can, that they can choose.
Commissioner Barton? I just wanna say one other thing, one thing that I, that I like. We have a very young group. You have some stepping stones to allow them to grow in law enforcement and be drawn a ladder. We really don't have that here in Crescent City. We have, you know, police officers that are in peace. And we're knows if something goes wrong, we really don't want the city manager involved or the commissioner's involved if we can help it. So I, I like that chain of command, I like what you have to offer.
You know, and that's what's, that's what's really unique about living in a, a county like Puckham is that, you know, we have a, believe it or not, and I don't necessarily subscribe to this belief, I think of us as a small, medium-type agency, but when you compare us nationally to other law enforcement organizations across the country, we actually fall into that category of a large agency. We have three hundred and eight employees. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of room for people to move around. If someone gets stale or stagnant in a position or, you know, gets bored and wants to make a change, there are numerous opportunities for them to move over into some other discipline or perhaps participate in a specialty team. And unfortunately, those are options, those options are not afforded to Crescent City police officers now just because of the sheer size of, of the officer department.
I know that for all of us, there's a human element here, but it is a great concern. And of course, it's our officers. And we wanna make sure that whatever we do, that we don't in any way take away from those officers and the great job that they are doing for us. This does offer some opportunities. And knowing that if they pass the background check and they meet the minimum qualifications to do a work with them, getting them hired onto the sheriff's department provides them this opportunity. I think that should give everyone a lot of, you know, some peace of mind. Because I do know there's a human element here that we, that we all are concerned with. We care about these people, they're part of the community. So we appreciate your willingness to do that.
Certainly.
Commissioner DeVita? With respect to the benefits for our officers and being, can y'all hear me? No? Okay, sorry, this thing is like a motion detector, you have to be as certain. Anyway, with respect to the retirement system, one of our local officers mentioned to me the concern that if you have so many years in with Crescent City's pension plan and then you move into the sheriff's plan with just the Florida retirement system, that they would have to start over from scratch, and that their years would be, in other words, it would take, they might be vested with Crescent City, but when they move into the FRM, they would have to serve the additional, I don't know how many years it goes to vest now for the FRM.
What is a vested period of FRM, is it six years?
I thought it was six.
Eight now.
It is, it is eight years, yeah.
But I, so in other words, they would not be vested, their, their service depends fully with Crescent City, they would be in two separate pension plans, would that be right?
Right, and that's not uncommon. We actually have multiple employees, probably more than I can count on my fingers here, that actually worked for other municipal agencies before they came to us. And some of them are actually earning a retirement in addition to earning those retirement credits for the, for the retirement system now.
Right, so is it, it seems to me that there could possibly be a disadvantage? In other words, you have to work those six years to vest to, I don't know, I don't know how that works out.
Sure. Unfortunately, and I understand your concern, and it's a legitimate concern, unfortunately, that's a variable that we don't have much control over because the Florida retirement system is administered for the pension.
If I, just to give you some personal experience, 'cause I have police department time as well, so if they're vested in the retirement system, then all of the money that they have contributed and all the money that the city has contributed, stays in that account and continues to grow, it will be paid out to them at the appropriate age or time. If they're not vested in the system, then the pension reimburses their total contributions to which they can then reimburse in other, put into other investment plans that we have, or whatever the case is. But that's correct, you know, when you talk of total years of service retiring the state system, it is total years of state service, but that money is not lost on it, it's not like it goes away. They're gonna, they're gonna get it one way or another when the time is right, part of that, part of that agreement with the pension.
And Colonel Wells actually brings up a very valid point. Some of your officers, if they're not vested in the pension plan, they will receive a lump sum cash payment. And there's, there's essentially two tracks that you can take in the Florida retirement system. There's a pension plan and then there's an investment plan. It really is something that someone would have to evaluate on an individual basis. Some people believe that the investment plan is more advantageous, and there are those who believe the pension plan is more advantageous. But I believe there's a mechanism, and correct me if I'm wrong, I wish I had Tammy, our human resources manager here, that could clarify that, of course, I believe there's a mechanism where they may actually be able to invest that payout back from the city's retirement system, back into the Florida retirement system's investment plan, not the pension plan, but the investment plan.
All right, well, thank you, 'cause I was raised as a concern.
Sure, I understand.
I'm gonna sit you on the side here a little bit. You're walking through something. Okay, say I, say I have something stolen. Would you give me the chain of what happening, happens once I've placed that phone call to you and I said, okay, I've had something stolen? And you kind of walk us through what happens, that contact back to the victim, you know, where it goes to the investigating unit, how that works? Can you just kind of?
Certainly.
I have car, okay, let's say I have a car stolen.
Okay, you have a car stolen.
That's car stolen.
Uh, and here's, here's what you can reasonably expect. Whenever that initial responding density comes out, he's going to process the scene, like any evidence, photograph, any evidence that's potentially there. From there, that triggers a compulsory entry of that vehicle into FBI, the Department of Criminal Information Center, which is something that Crescent City is doing now, but we actually make those entries on the city's behalf.
Does the sheriff's office make those entries?
Yes, yes, we do. But from there, once a car is stolen and that report's generated, the evidence and forward that information to our crime analyst who creates a bulletin for who will be on the lookout, and that information gets forwarded out to all of our deputy sheriffs and to surrounding jurisdictions as well. On the backside, that case has been forwarded to an investigator who follows up on that case because it's, our deputies are great, y'all investigate, but they have a limited amount of time that they're able to spend on this investigation. And that's why it's important for us to refer those felony cases for additional follow-up to our criminal investigation bureau. In addition to that, a detective following them up who is going to stand up and contact the victim and let them know how the case is progressing, if they're developing any additional leads or suspects, or if an arrest has been made of the case, and then hopefully ultimately the recovery of their vehicle. It provides that, we provide that additional wraparound service to ensure that all of their needs are met throughout that entire process. Additionally, the added benefit of having that investigative bureau is for the detective to see the case all the way through prosecution, successful prosecution, and holding moves accountable who are responsible for the theft of the vehicle.
I can, this relates to the presentation I made earlier. And then that case becomes part of a case study by the crime analyst, looking for patterns and trends in related cases to see if we can connect them to any other cases that have leads. And then through that, it goes through that stratified project that I talked about, where that case goes up the level of responsibility, level of accountability, based on, does it fit part of the pattern, what's the significance of the case? And are we doing everything we can, and any thing being missed? That is a felony case, so that is one of the crimes that we watch, is auto theft. So every morning, at eight thirty, nine o'clock in the morning, Major Rose is gonna hear about that case, and he's gonna make sure that those sergeants and deputies with the tenants did everything they could, even if they missed a little thing, like forgot to flag it in the automated license plate reader system and already having a backseat in the car, that's looking for stolen cars and license plate readers that we have to account. You know, just little things like that, you know, you have that multiple level of double checking accountability, making sure each other, you know, did what we gotta do, or did anybody else have any ideas? It's gonna ship a long process that goes for felonies that lasts days and days, you know, many times.
Okay, thank you. And now also, and I don't wanna, if someone has another question, please let me know, but I also know, and Colonel Wells had, we had this discussion yesterday, I don't know if you were able to gather these information yet, but you're absorbing right now, you stepped in and you're assisting us while we make sure that everything is the way it's supposed to be for our officers. And in doing so right now, currently, you're absorbing that cost of twenty-four hours coverage, is that correct?
Sure, correct, we, and I did not have a chance to pull there. We're actually in a pipe pay cycle, so it's six to end and go to the next one, so. So you asked me about how much overtime money we would spend, and I, I can't answer that.
Okay.
But yes, in order to provide someone inside the city limits for those kinds of days, we are just paying our deputy sheriffs overtime to do that right now.
You're graceful, and thank you both for doing that. Commissioner, do you have any other questions? Well, we're gonna open that up in fifty seconds. Is everybody good?
I think it's time for a public.
Okay, at this time, we're getting on public comment against these. Remember, I asked if you keep those to two minutes, we do have a timer, and there's no deferment of your time. You'll ask, make your comments, ask your questions, and at the end, the sheriff, or Colonel Wells, will respond back to any, if you have any questions. Thank you. We have any features?
Sorry, it's your question, it's two, George Condon, the real president for. I just had a question about like if, if we like keep the Crescent City Police Department, I know they were talking about like they take calls on the press and would they be subject to like a wiretap? Would that become like evident?
No, what they're saying is no personal phone. They said, I wanted to go through the sheriff's office, so there is a reference button.
What I'm saying, if they've already seen it before, what makes you say they're not gonna continue doing? Are they gonna change their number?
Are you asking if that's for the sheriff's department or?
No, that's for like Crescent City.
Okay. Well, right now, we're not, Colonel Wells, do you wanna speak to that?
I'm just saying, if they continue to take calls, would it be subject to a wiretap?
We're not speaking for the, for our current lead force right now.
We're talking about the Crescent City Police Department.
I don't know that we could address that at this time, but we can definitely follow back up with you on that question.
Okay. Could we, could, what was the question, could you just clarify the question?
Okay, so you say how some of the people in the community, they say they can just call police officers on their personal phone. So wouldn't that mean they should be subject to a wiretap, because that was the evidence?
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I, I think I understand your question, but as it relates to wiretaps, there are state and federal laws that govern those. It's actually illegal to report a conversation without another party's consent. So no, they would be subject to a wiretap. What they would be subject to was the burden of maintaining those records for who they have in effect created a public record that they have to maintain. If that helps clarify the question for you.
But who's to say they don't falsify those documents or what they were talking about on the phone?
There are civil and criminal penalties that they take potentially face if that were the case.
And this is, this is a generalization, correct?
Yes.
Law enforcement across the board. Okay, I just wanna make sure we keep that here. Thank you so much. Next?
I guess there's a sign proxy from the citizens before you announced that you could not defer your minutes. So I'm going to go ahead and continue until I'm done.
Um, you got, oh, what did you get, a sign proxy?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, that has not been provided to us. And so what are you basically telling us, Diane, if you want to do? Thank you, okay. Yeah, that within two minutes, those are rules.
I will, I will continue until my decision is done.
Diane?
A decision implies a choice. To make a choice, you must have information. So far, we've only had one side of the information. Let me start by saying I have the greatest respect and appreciation for the sheriff's department, and I think everybody in this town feels the same. It also makes extreme financial sense for the sheriff's department to get Crescent City. If you look at the handout that I provided to this commissioner, and as I mentioned on the front table, is the link to the sheriff's budget meeting with the county. The sheriff, in his own words, said that reserves funds is what kept them afloat this year. The sheriff has some financial issues with the department, and it would, it would approve them to have an extra half million dollars a year. If you look at the numbers, and I appreciate the fact that Colonel Wells, you know, or the fact that we, we already are entitled to those extra services that the sheriff's department provides because we already pay county taxes.
Ms. Sykes?
Yes.
Your time is up. We set the rules, I announced in the beginning there being a deferment. I asked you to wrap it up.
We have seven vehicles, we have new vehicles.
Ms. Sykes?
No, may I have a question?
Yes.
Okay. It is my understanding, special meeting, the rule was that by the whole commission, not just the mayor, we were not asked what the rules should be. And normally in towns like this, people are allowed to aggregate crimes to a reasonable extent, not up to ten or fifteen minutes. So I think that Ms. Sykes has more than four or five people on there. It was, since she has a free location, it would be reasonable to give her at least six minutes so that she could speak for them, and we did not advertise that limitation in advance. And I, I think we should have the courtesy to listen to her within the reasonable level, that she's speaking for others.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask that we, we give a commission if we want to go in that direction. We did set the rules at the beginning. It was my understanding that as the chair, that I have the ability to set those rules. And I discussed those with some of the other members. And I believe that we, you know, that's the other thing too, is that we also don't have a protocol. The former commission has never set any type of a protocol for a workshop. If the other rest of the members are in favor of allowing Ms. Sykes to get to six minutes, then we'll allow Ms. Sykes to get to six minutes. Will you want to...
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. Commissioner Wells?
All right, are there people going to ask for the same thing?
Well...
Speaking for multiple people.
Speaking to a lot of them.
Okay, let's keep this for the discussion here, please.
All right, it's fine.
So Commissioner Burton?
No.
Commissioner Vito?
Yeah.
That's a question, okay. Then you've asked your six minutes.
Thank you.
Wait one second, let me have her start the timer back up. Two minutes, four more minutes, please. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Does she have six minutes now on topic with you?
Yeah. She should have had, sorry, now one minute's remaining.
All right, you've taken fifteen minutes.
All right. Thank you.
That's not really an opportunity, but that's fine. We currently have put in a budget and the comparison between the police chief and the sheriff was made on a continuing array of this year's budget, which included the seventy-seven thousand dollars for police cars. We will not, obviously not have that burden or that expense in the coming years. We currently have zero percent of our vehicles that exceed the rotation period. The sheriff's office has more than thirty-five percent of their vehicles that exceed the rotation period as far as spare vehicles. Once we get the two cars that were entitled to our grant this year, we'll have enough cars for new cars and two spare cars, the chief car, the car and the sedan. The sheriff's department, well, it has four spare vehicles for a hundred and twenty to one hundred and forty cars that are on shift. We have in our budget to have an additional officer, so it's not five to five. It's five to seven plus the add-in because our budget included the chief, the current five officers. The additional officers that was approved in this year's budget plus our ministry, so that's eight people compared to five. The future year comparison should not have made through the seventy-seven thousand dollars grant. Pearson, although in Delicia County is now having a second thought about their decision to give up their police department, has all a lot of small shit. There's a couple of major problems with giving up our police department. Once we shut it down, I've been told it'll take one point five million dollars to start it up again, should be the size. There's nothing we can do when the contract runs out to ensure that that half a million dollars price tag is going to stay at half a million dollars. And there's no guarantee that Gator is going to be subject to a feeback. And we have no control over our own policing budget. If we control the money, we can have some measure of control over expenses. If we don't want to pay overtime, we can say there is no overtime. The bigger question is, why are we even having this discussion? We don't even know what records, which are, Burton requested of FBOA. So we don't know what those training irregularities are. However, I have requested a record check, so anybody who wants to do their email address after, I'll send you the results of that record check. I don't know that too, but when I have a limited budget and I could have, and we have a limited budget for Crescent City, you can't control things like rent anymore. That's a fixed expense, which is what the sheriff's department, if we accept that, a fixed expense. We can't budge on it. Currently, without grants, us are going to go broke. We're going to have to apply for grants anymore. Grants are a good thing. It allows us to buy things like new police cars that we wouldn't normally have money to do. And once we make a decision to generalize police force, we lose the ability to have any control over our money. Because our entire, everyone on campus are going to go to pay the sheriff's department. I really liked Melissa's suggestion for last meeting, that perhaps we need a hybrid. We want to keep our police department, our police men and women. So perhaps we could do a hybrid with the sheriff's department and have them cover the upper level management and admin. I don't think we should pay for the sheriff for the expenses for maintenance and building, because it's going to be a substantial loss. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Wells, do you have any other questions?
Sure, we can, I guess, all of them.
Okay, okay.
We can do the same.
Thank you.
Certainly, but I think that out of respect for everyone here, Diane, no disrespect to you, but if you're going to present information, you should make sure that it's factually accurate. And the fact of the matter is, my budget was made whole by the county commission this year. So that, that statement that you made that we're going to use this money for this, from this potential merger to supplant our budget this year is... Is incredibly inaccurate. That's such a false statement. Incredibly important to that team. Everything we have is public. I said if you'd like to see the purchase orders that have already been pulled to make our fleet whole this year. We have multiple SDBs, everything we need. We have projects that can get run that day.
Okay, do you want to do some, do you need some mic, microphone, please?
I'll be using it.
Well, Wes, I'm going to ask everybody, I understand we're trying to work this, okay? We really, everybody, please stay calm. It's very difficult here in this auditorium when other people are talking.
And I apologize.
And we will ask that you, you know, I'm going to use your microphone.
I just offered the public records that it consists of the purchase orders for our fleet. Our fleet will be whole this year. Our fleet was not in the position it was in after this year as anything to do with the budget. It had to do with the motor vehicle, meaning the factors, suffered a factor down with COVID and that's on all of our last year's vehicles. So yes, our fleet got into grave difficulty because of COVID, not budget. So, and like the lady said, that she wished she'd had time to say three words and that was as of this. She gave all of her information, how the budget was as of this. Now we're in a brand new budget.
Do you have any other secrets, please? If you, so if you want to stop at here, then you can do that. John, do you want to talk to me? Thank you.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm John Newbo. I live at five six fifth old highway seventeen, that's the city. I have three points to make. I don't know if I can make it in two minutes, but well, please.
You're fine. You're fine. Go ahead.
All right. The, uh... The first point number of the news here, the sheriff's budget is somewhat subject to the economy. I wanted to keep that in mind. The budget does come somewhat busy with the economy. The second point, there's been some talk over the years that Crescent County might go charter government, which I hope never happens, but if it did happen and we were under the sheriff's department for protection, it would be much easier for Crescent City to go into charter government. And that means we would lose our city government, we would have no more city commission. And our services would be centered in Palatka. The third point is Crescent City is a true town. We have a monetized water sewer system. We have our own gas department. We have our city manager. We have a working city commission. We have our own police department. We have a loan structure. And those rules are enforced. We have a tax instructor, a yearly budget. And we have a sound financial position. We're in a, in a good financial position. With all this in place, Crescent City stands on the trust of big family family. We have new city commissions. We have a great vision for our town. I encourage you, the total commission, to keep our police department, even though it's hard work to do so, and use your vision, your energy, and your hard work. Not only keep our town intact, but also we use your feet and your energy to find new roads and new businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dave.
Officer Davis, Harvey, for you. We didn't ask any questions.
We didn't ask any questions. Thank you.
All right, my name is Tate Harvey. I'm at two one seven North Main Street. I don't know if I have a question, but I have a question. I'm sorry, with our city commission and everybody. We take pride in both of you guys being with the office that you're with. We take pride in the ones who pay for both of you guys that there are two things that keep us in Crescent City's faith or keep working with us to bring jobs in and to better our city. Bringing in Gator's locations, borders is not, and going away with our police department is totally not what you guys are supposed to be doing in my eyesight. Gator, if you're going to come down here, come and help. Show your presence in our community and our city instead of just coming in as a full wrecking ball and just doing the favor. There's our, there's our other opportunities or avenues that we can go down that we can both work together. I see this side thing Crescent City slash sheriff office. After a while, you're going to take Crescent City down and just going to be safe and pray sheriff office if we keep continuing going in this direction. Since you guys been in this situation, Gator, Miss, the other guy, having saw y'all present in our community to act out our local police words, just come and see, just visiting the people in our community. Make it your presence known. That makes a lot. That makes, that makes a big difference. We take pride in seeing our local police department officers in the grocery store, in our eat hardware there, doing all that kind of stuff. And that's what Crescent City is all about. You know, our ancestors, now forefathers, they stood in this city to build it up to what it is. So I'm not saying we don't want to work with you guys. I'm not saying don't, we don't need your presence, because yes, crime is growing. Yes, Colonel, you said it, this is not going to be like the Mayberry and Andy Griffith anymore. You know, but try the best to try to make it seem like Andy Griffith and the Mayberry thing, that's what I'm about.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Thank you very much.
Hi, y'all. I'm Tom Middleton, One South Main. I would just like to say no pun intended with Mr. Wells, making fun of Mayberry, that's wrong. But I've known Gator for a long time. I've known his wife even longer, because he's a man who works. When he says something, he means it. And I have seen more police work on my street, which is the bad area, than I have seen in the la, I've seen it the last week that I have seen, who knows? And I just want to thank Gator and the deputies for coming down here and listening to us. And it's not, by the way, it's not Crescent City like it used to be anymore, Mr. Banks. Wherever it's twenty years ago, you can leave your mole out. You can't do that now. And I'm going to say this to you, Michelle and to me Lisa, you started the neighborhood watch. If you were, you know, so involved with the Crescent City Police Department, why would you start maybe watch? That's, I'm just throwing that out there. Unless you've been a victim, you know, I, we've been robbed three times. It dies wherever it dies. And with Gator, it goes on. So understand, unless you've been a victim, you don't, you don't really care. I want Gator to do that. I want to take on you. Thank you, thank you. And just for clarification, thank you, Ms. Middleton, for clarification. Commissioner Vito, she did float that out there that we have a neighborhood watch. It turned into more of a Crescent City connection. And so it was an opportunity for the community, people in the community to come together. And Commissioner Burton was also there listening on that city side. Yes, sir?
How you doing? My name is Max Furman, four hundred South Main Street. And I'd just like to say I am fifteen-year resident. And all the views mostly is ask me for your vote, which I supported all of you. By the way, this is the first time I ever been to a meeting. But I just want it to be known that I do support Crescent City police. They've done fine job, all the tough years out there there. And I still think we ought to keep them.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So it's easier to argue with me, but thank you.
So I kind of, but I have children. No, absolutely, they can keep it without, uh... As I had briefly mentioned last, last night, that we had called it a partnership. And calling it partnership, my question was...
No.
Instead of a takeover to you?
You keep your address, please, so we don't worry.
I have two addresses. I guess I'll choose you three away, Highway.
The one you rather get than my address.
Pardon?
The one you live in now.
Well, I have foster children for their protection. I don't know that I need to give every address. I'm a taxpayer. I give another address that I own in Crescent City, but obviously for their protection. Right. Is that, is that specific to Commissioner Burton? She knows both my addresses. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. So my question was, that it's already been established, even by Sheriff Deloach, that it's an advantage for them to have a substation down here. We know that one of the struggles that we've had is training, apparently, not everyone has known, but it's been now brought to our attention. And we have gone through several chiefs. So my question would be, if financially advantageous as well as the services for them, not to pay for a building, why would we coexist in our police department with a sheriff's substation where we give a certain amount of budget instead of a chief to a colonel or somebody that's going to supervise our officers, exists in the same building with sheriff? So we have more coverage, actually, they can back each other up. And then actually, the, you know, all the cars, most of the re-pass is still there. It's an advantage for them. It's an advantage for us. The training would be consistent. And we just figure out a budget if we can't keep our police department as it is. And that gives us better training, deals with the staffing of a supervisor. It helps both people. Saves them money. We give them a certain money instead of a chief. They get some physical training. We keep our officers. I mean, there's a lot of things that have not been brought up, the key things like that for partnership. And maybe someday, there might be another conversation, but it seems like we're going from here to there without looking for solutions, so we can help each other. You know, I, I respect both, but I just want my kids to have services and the community to have services. And I think we need to look at that opportunity. My other question would be, if we do end up having to go to a contract completely instead of a partnership, where it's less than most, a takeover, then I think we need to talk about some long-term, twenty-year-out, what's going to happen. Not two years, not three years, what's in the budget, but there has to be some kind of cap. Either by cost of living, saying twenty years from now. And I don't even know if they're allowed, if the sheriff changes every certain amount of years to do like a ten or twenty-year contract. But otherwise, we're too vulnerable if we don't have some cap twenty years out.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly, I'll be happy to. What I was referring to as a benefit is to the residents of South Putnam specifically. It's not advantageous for us to have a substation in Crescent City necessarily, because we primarily work out of our vehicle, but it would be a benefit to the residents of the county who had better access to the sheriff's office. And to your second point, what was your, there was a multitude of questions. What was your second question?
It would be a high growth contract, possibly, in the middle. You would get some money in the contract, I don't know what you were hoping, but it would be whatever money that the commission or you put together, that would normally pay for the staff and the chief and say that you, okay, the colonel, he would already work in, and the substation would be your detective and your deputy, and then they would share that substation where our officer would sit in front of the officer, and the training would be consistent under your, your station.
That's a very novel concept, and I, I fault you for thinking out of the box. I wouldn't be foolish if I was to assign someone to Crescent City Police Department or any police department in the jurisdictional confines of Putnam County and assume the liability for an agency that's not accredited. It would put me in a very precarious situation, and that's not a route I'm willing to go down.
And that was why we're trying to get training, because the contract would be a high growth contract, the training would be consistent with your office, the supervisor's direct role then would be contracted to your office. The officer would still play, present to the officers, so we already paid a tax on the county, who would have sufficient resources and will provide something for both benefits, the sheriff and Crescent City.
Yeah, I understand the, you know, the concept you're introducing here. I said it's a novel idea, but unfortunately, there's not provision in Florida statutes or in the Florida administrative code or the criminal justice standards and training commission that will allow for that type of a hybrid model.
Thank you. She also, in one of her other suggestions, was that we do more of a long term, and of course, she was talking twenty years, and that is excessive amount of time, but she, I think what she's saying is, just for the protection of the city, that we do look at something that's a little more long term than three years.
Sure, and I, I'll be happy to address that as well. It would not be politically expedient for any sheriff who has assumed office and whose office already provided contractual services to a municipality to ever sever that relationship unless it was mutually agreed upon, because it would cause him some very, very unhappy voters in that particular area and would very likely result in his untimely removal from office by, by the voters.
Thank you, ma'am. You would just introduce yourself and give your address.
My name is Jared Hardy, two three seven Duro, Crescent City. I was born and raised here in Crescent City. I have a question for Mr. Wells or either Mr. Deloche. Although I'm out of city limits, I live in Denver, Long Station, I meant to say, I live in Long Station. How would, if the sheriff was to patrol the city limits of Crescent City, they wouldn't be allowed to come out to Denver where I live at, right? I'd have to call the sheriff's department for them to come out?
Well, the city police officers are actually not allowed outside of the jurisdictional confines of the city unless we request them through mutual aid. Now, in certain circumstances, there may be opportunities for, if there's, if there's an emergency call, something that requires an immediate response or multiple units to respond in your area, which might just outside of the city, for that officer to respond out. And that's something that happens now even with the Crescent City officers.
Okay, but I would have to call the Crescent City deputies, the officers couldn't come out to, let me see what my problem was, I would have to call the sheriff's office. Were they allowed to come out?
Yes, maybe you would, you would actually call the sheriff's office. Now, or anyone that lives within the jurisdictional confines of Crescent City would actually call the sheriff's office, because we provide those contractual services for the entire county.
Okay, could they come, could they come out if they're in city limits, if they're in Crescent City, patrol in Crescent City, could they come out?
Only, only for emergencies. Only for emergencies, because they would be contracted, as I say, inside the Crescent City limits, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Is that how we currently, isn't that how we currently operate as far as with our correcta, with the city, that if you need their, explain that if you would like that?
Yes, that's right. So we have a mutual aid agreement with all municipalities in Putnam County, and if there is a true emergency that lies just outside of the city limits, on an infrequent basis, we do call for assistance.
It would be the same?
So it would be the same?
It would be, it would be essentially the same, yes.
Okay. But that's just my opinion, Crescent City, fifty-five years, we always had Crescent City police. They've been crime, it's crime and classing, crime and classing. And I saw some of the pictures up there, and Jeremy have been incarcerated, but the system, maybe got to, he got to be a certain age, so he got to be a certain age. Long he wasn't juvenile, he did the most, against the most juvenile sentence or whatever, and then he got out. Then he got out. But after he got to be eighteen, after he got to be eighteen, now you could have charged him as an adult, a felon. I saw another figure, Mr. Brown. How would you classify him if he lived outside the city limits?
If, I'm sorry?
He was outside the city limits.
So that's from the previous presentation, but if any, sorry, if anybody was mentioned in the first presentation about crime, that crime occurred in the city, you may be absolutely right. Most of those suspects may have been outside the city limits, but we're talking about crime in the city, and so everybody that's pictured up there committed a crime inside the city of Crescent City. That's not based on residence, it's based on crime location.
Okay. Now, if the city limits only goes so far, we have in Crescent City. Right, Mr. Banks? No? The city limits only goes so far in Crescent City. Okay, huh? So can you go determine what goes on in Crescent City, the city limits, and outside the city limits?
I think I follow your question there, and that's, that's a great question. Like the sheriff mentioned earlier, crime and criminals know their boundaries. How we combat that is through creating relationships with our municipalities and all having to work together, just like how can you draw a line between Putnam and volition? A good number of the drug traffic in Putnam County and other crimes is directly related to volition. So we have to have the open mindedness and the systems in place to allow us to work across boundaries. You're absolutely right. We can't let boundaries stop law enforcement, and that's something we always aspire to.
Thank you, Mr. Harden. Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Michael McKeown, I live at thirty-two North Park Street. Now, when I was looking at this presentation, I was seeing a chart that showed about success from the Crescent City Police Department compared to the sheriff's office. What I also noticed, it's also a change of command. And what I mean by that is very simple. A police officer here at Crescent City is answerable to his sergeant, and then is answerable to his chief of police, and then that chief of police is answerable to the city manager. The city manager is answerable to you. That is not only a chain of command, that's our voice. Because when we have a complaint, we have this great forum that we can express our complaints to you. That means if there's a problem with the city police department, we can address it, we can fix it. You get rid of the police department, you just change the rhythm of our voice.
Thank you. Do you have another speaker? Yes, ma'am. Is there?
Yes, hi, my name is Mary Battle, hi. Address is one zero seven Diamond Lake Drive, Crescent City. Okay, I have a question about jurisdiction. The Crescent City police officers, who would become deputies, in other words, hired by you under that particular plan, okay, would they have jurisdiction all over the county or within the city limits? Now, I'm not talking about backup emergencies, I'm talking about first response situations.
Yes, under the proposal, even the deputies who are assigned to Crescent City would be only sworn deputy sheriff, the Ray Woodberg force, involved for civil infractions that occur anywhere within inside the jurisdictional limits of Putnam County.
And so if the five were, in essence, rehired by you all, you're telling me that the five with jurisdiction all over the county?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, and my question then arises about how other types of issues within the departments other than what's been up on the board, how we prevent those situations from occurring outside the city limits? Because many of us who live outside the city limits support city businesses and have been victims of crime in Crescent City and have had firsthand knowledge of how they have been handled by some of the five.
One question.
Could you maybe clarify that for me, just as I'm.
Well, the bell rang, I don't know what to do.
That's okay, you can, you can clarify that for me.
Okay. What I'm saying is that some members of the county outside of Crescent City, residents of the county, that are coming into the city to keep the city businesses thriving, have been victims of crime within the city limits under the old administrations, the multiple old administrations of Crescent City Police Department. Those experiences have taught us that living in Putnam County, outside of Crescent City is a godsend in terms of police performance. And so that is why I am mentioning this. And by the way, seeing you all, Putnam County sheriff's officers, and thank you also for your interest in backing up Crescent City Police at this time.
We do have quite a few county residents here tonight and city residents, and it's important that we hear from both groups, because a lot of our county residents do come into the city and they do use our services, they use our grocery store, they buy their tags here, and so they, in essence, have an opportunity to speak here as well. So that's why if anybody asks that, that's been asked as many, you know, if you are in the county, can you speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Jonathan Baxter, I live at one twenty-five Lawrence Lane, Crescent City. I moved here a little after a year ago, and I started seeing this online on the Crescent City Facebook thing, so it interested me that there were certifications that went out of date and that everyone on the department was put in on an administrative leave. Oh, an administrative leave, sorry about that. One of the things I was wondering was, from the sheriff's department perspective, what happens when some of your officers don't have their certifications up to date? Does the whole sheriff's department get put on administrative leave? I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to be funny, I'm just saying that, that it just sounded like a nuclear bomb to take care of a small problem. In the military, usually, when we had issues with a lower unit, let's say you have a hundred division in Louisville, Kentucky, and you've got maybe somebody in Hertzville, Alabama, that's a small debt. That debt, if they're doing something wrong, the hundred division's gonna send people down there, and they're gonna mentor that small bit, and get them back on the right road. And the question I have is, why couldn't there be a, I see all these programs that show that. Is there any on that are a small municipal police department mentoring program? Is there one of those? Anyway, that's my question, and I appreciate all that y'all do, I really do, as far as law enforcement. You know, I have the utmost respect for everything that you guys do, and I know that you put yourselves out there every day.
Thank you, sir. Jared, can you speak to the, to the question?
Certainly. Perhaps it might be more appropriate to allow the city manager to build that question, but with regard to your question about the sheriff's office and what happens when one of our officers or deputy certification lapses, that doesn't happen, because we have a full-time training section that ensures that everyone is in compliance, and that's part of being an accredited agency. There are certain standards that we have to meet, and on a periodic basis, there's actually a team of assessors that come and make certain that we are compliant with nationally recognized best standards and that everyone's certifications are maintained properly. That's not within my purview to do that.
That's all my questions.
Sure, sure.
Do we have any other speakers?
My name is Leanne, I'm two eight seven, I'm in short text, we see one twenty. I'm still concerned about the transparency that we're having as far as, has, has anybody told us exactly what, what was wrong with our department? What credentials were not taken care of, and who was in charge of making sure that got done? Where was leadership in that? Mike? I mean.
He addressed that in the beginning, I think he did address that in the beginning.
I must admit that I didn't, I didn't understand what each one of our officers did to be put on administration leave.
Not that they've done anything, it's that we have to verify that the certification is in order.
What certifications, though? What brought Mike to even look at certifications after that smoke off?
This is getting us off, of course, the standards.
Okay, and I have another question as far as.
One second. The standards, one, one second, please. This is getting us off topic.
When will we get to that topic?
Off topic, but I understand where you're coming from, and some of this, of course, is gonna be part of the audit, and when it does come out, it will be transparent and it will be released. But in the meantime, Michael, do you want to kind of repeat just a little bit of what you said earlier that you did?
Sure, so what I said before was, the basis for this was an analysis done by the sheriff's office, where they showed deficiencies, some irregularities in their training certification. So that's where we are.
So that was requested before, after you allowed the chief of police to make disciplinary action, and if y'all took over, if, if Mr. Wells there put his hands on another officer, what would you do, Gator? Would you let him walk away, or would you have a disciplinary action?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Ask a question. Would you let the, respond to, how are you looking at?
Colonel Wells would no longer be employed by the sheriff's office. Simply.
So, with regard to what was brought up, which is that Michael had the sheriff look at the files and they were determined to be deficient. And the sheriff should be able to talk about what deficiencies were found that created the suspension.
We're not discussing that at this meeting.
But that's... That's part of the whole reason we're in this conversation.
Well, I agree with you. The way that we can adjourn this meeting, we started the meeting with the understanding that from a clarity and a courtesy that Michael would give you an essay. There is an audit in place, okay? And if there's any investigations that stem off of that audit, we have to protect those officers, the integrity of the office. So, with that said, at this point in time, we have given you all the information that we are able to give you. But we have protected our officers. Our officers join administrative leave with us.
But this was like there was a pre-audit done by Sheriff Deloche. And he then elevated it up feeling something was deficient. So, he should be able to speak to what he thought was deficient in order for it to be elevated up to the FDLE.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I'll be happy to speak to that. So, some time ago, at the request of former Chief Carmen and Ms. Restadino, we were asked to come in and look at a whole host of procedures within the Crescent City Police Department. There were some minor deficiencies that were noted and some more serious ones, especially with regard to how evidence is handled, transported and stored, and a number of control mechanisms we identified that were weak or non-existent. With regard to the training, there were some minor deficiencies that were brought to the chief's attention. I don't know if they were ever addressed or not. It wasn't my place to follow up with the chief to make sure that he addresses issues, but it was his department, his agency. The more pressing concern actually came from within the police department. And I can't get into specifics because I want to, just like the mayor said, we want to preserve the integrity of this investigation. But there were some deficiencies and perhaps some records that may have potentially been falsified that ultimately led to the decision that Ms. Restadino made to place the officers on administrative leave. And let me just clarify that for you. That's not something that's done punitive. That's not a punitive action against them. They're being on administrative leave, pending the review of their certifications to make certain that if there are any deficiencies, that they can be corrected. I'm sorry.
Thank you. But I think what you have to understand, and this is from a... This is something that we all have to realize is that if a certification is not in order, the liability that it places on the city, on these officers, on us as residents financially, I mean, we're going to bear that burden. So, it's protection of everyone. This is something that was necessary. Well, unfortunately, we didn't have a chief. And Ms. Restadino did the very best she could based on the advice that was given to him on attorney. And he tried to take care of it the very best he could. And so, that's where we're going to leave it at that. Do we have any other speakers? Yes, ma'am.
Barbara Shaw at 104 Beechers Point Drive, Black. I understand that sometimes we out here don't know what's going on up there. And that maybe it is best we don't know until things clear. But as one of those out here and not one of those up there, I understand how disgruntled and confused when we don't know the whole story. And when we don't know that every single one of our officers wasn't certified, there wasn't anybody... I'm not asking that question, I'm making a statement. There wasn't anybody that was still certified, that could still possibly be working. That's one thing. And if we don't know everything and we're waiting for all this information, is it time to make this decision now? I mean, that's what they say. And I'm one of them now. I'm not one of you anymore. And so, I understand how frustrated they are. And again, maybe when it all clears and we see the whole picture, we'll say, oh, my goodness. Sure, they were right, that's what they should have done. But is there no way that we can delay this for a while until it clears? How long is it going to take us for everything to come out? Or is it ever really going to come out? No, I don't need that every day, Jim. I mean, maybe it doesn't need to come out. But how long is it going to take, guys, for us to get the whole audit through or the whole whatever?
Fortunately, we're at the most yet FDLE. And I can tell you that I ask daily. I know Michael asks, the sheriff asks, and they're all trying to get this moved through as quickly as possible. And why this came about, that we're even discussing this currently with the sheriff's department... Okay, my time is up, I'm sorry. The reason we're discussing this with the sheriff's department is, as you're aware, that we are looking for a police chief right now. We have no leadership currently that is leading the police department because we lost our chief. We have advertised... We had three that were qualified. Two of them have dropped out. But in fairness, in fairness, and believe me, it spreads throughout the whole state. You understand this. They know what's going on in all the law enforcement agencies throughout the state. So, what has happened is two of them have dropped out. Other people are watching what's going on in Crescent City. Before we can bring on, in fairness, two new chiefs, we need to look at every option. Because I have been here back in this area five years and this is going on our fourth chief. And you know, as we do, we have limitations with salary. We're competing with other places for salary. There's just a lot of limitations that they have here with a small agency. So, I think that, you know, we're trying to do the very best that we can in looking at all options before we make a commitment to another police chief. And you also understand, and thank you for bringing that to everyone's attention, the sensitivity with something such as this. And that there are details out there for the protection of everyone. That's... And that's why at the very beginning of the meeting, I asked for Michael to please, as a courtesy, to clarify some of what was going on that he could. Thank you.
Okay, but I still think... I don't know. I'm glad you're... Again, I said that the other night. I'm glad you're up there and I'm down here.
Believe me, this is not something that's been taken lightly. This has not been an easy couple of weeks for any of us. And whatever we decide to do, I know that I speak for myself and I'm sure fellow commissioners will say that they will not take this decision lightly. And they're going to do what they feel is the best.
And I'm not sure it's the best thing for the city, but I'm still telling you, because I have to say it before I sit down, I like having a Crescent City Police Department.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Biden.
Okay. I'm on.
You're on.
I don't think the decision is going to be made tonight. I think it's going to take some detail setting and some more information to compile. But I can say through the years, I've been on this commission. We always had problems with keeping a police force. Number one, one of the main issue was, one of the main issue was, the commission wanted to run, there you go, the police department. And that ain't the way it should be. If we hire a chief, we got confidentiality with the chief, we can either let the chief run the police department. But it's always, always going to be a problem if it don't get to that point. It's not for the commission to run the police department. It's for the chief. That's why we need a highly qualified person. And that's why, because we want to go out and get another chief. We need to get a chief, we need to get all the officers. Now, this, for the taxpayer, it might cost you an extra dollar. But I don't think we can get the progress police department we need here in Crescent City not off the tax that we pay now. And we're ready to cap. We might want to let the citizens know what the ball is. We're ready to cap now. So, we're going to have to look into some other matters and do a whole lot of other things before we finance another police department to get it to stay. My second point is... We'll look more in two minutes. My second point is this. When we get a good police department that I run, it's not for the commission to think, the mayor, or anybody else to come in and direct the police department and they ain't got no law enforcement training. So, we need to cut that out. Now, I'm asking the citizens to give us the opportunity to work through this. I'm asking the citizens to give us the opportunity to work through this. Now, bear in mind, the sheriff ain't asked to come down here. I know he's a chief of the kind. But he didn't actually come down here in the picture with Crescent Police Department. We asked him to come down here and give us a helping hand. And that's what he's doing down here. And he's doing a very good job. I wanted to see him praise for that. Very good job. And he always backed up Crescent City. So, yes, give us time to work through this. And I'm pretty sure we'll come out with a smooth product. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Biden.
Brad Peterson, 315 Chestnut Street. What are you guys doing? I mean, we have a police department that's suspended for certification. Who've been suspended now for two weeks. And if they need certification or training or updating, why can't they be doing that right now? They're getting paid. Whatever the deficit is that needs to fill here, we should be doing it. And until this investigation is done, whatever that is about, I think we need to table any discussion about going with the sheriff's office until we get a resolution on whatever investigation and whatever it may show. I think we owe that to our police department. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, any other speakers? Do you want... Okay, I'll give you... Yes, ma'am. What's the else? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Perry. I live at 225 High Rock Court, East Palatina, Florida. And it's a pleasure to be here. And we send greetings to East Palatina to our fans in Crescent City. While I do not reside in Crescent City, I certainly spend a considerable amount of time here in this great community, fishing, eating at restaurants, doing business, and visiting my friends who live down here. I feel that I have a stake in this fine city, much like I and my fellow citizens have a stake in our county, in our state, and in our country. You have a difficult decision in front of you and it is your decision. I would like to point out a few things. One, of course, the primary responsibility of any government is for the welfare and safety of its citizens. Let's not forget that our sheriff is here for a reason. And that reason is he was invited here because he has information that he thinks the citizens that he has sworn to protect need to have. Let me tell you a few things what I know for certain. One, if you decide to go with the Crescent County Sheriff's Office, you're going to get a sheriff's office that is constantly in training mode to try and improve their craft and improve on their own high standards. And this is necessary, board members, to maintain their badge of excellence, which is their accreditation. Now, while I'm sure there are some who would prefer that the sheriff's office not be here in Crescent City, I can guarantee you that there's a segment of the population that certainly doesn't want them here. And that is the criminal element. Those who would prey on the weak and make money from the misery of others. Quite frankly, I think you will find, if you do decide to accept the offer of the Crescent County Sheriff's Office, that you will be getting a very professional, trained law enforcement agency to protect your citizens. I appreciate the opportunity to be down here with you tonight and to be able to express my opinion. Thank you. And thank you to my fellow citizens.
My name is Frida Hartman. I have a house at 33 Shanks Main. And I also have a home in the south side of the city limits on Denver Road. And you folks all work for us. We elected you. We put our trust in you. And we love our city. And we want our city to remain whole. If we start breaking pieces off here and pieces off there to make it more of a big municipality like other cities, we're not Crescent City. We have a good police department. We have a chain of command. We have a chief. If these guys needed certification, why wouldn't that take care of? He answers to you. Why wouldn't that take care of? Somebody dropped the ball. And it's not these guys. And it's not us. You all dropped the ball. We want our police department. Put an end to them, chief, in there. We have a good guy on the police department that could do that. He's done it before. Please, stop this rushing into this. I love the sheriff's department. I live in the country too. But we need to keep Crescent City whole. And we can do it. We've done it for all these years. And why stop now?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, we allowed her to get a client because we allowed her to get a client and we banged her up.
Mary Battle. Okay. I think that Sheriff Deloche really brought to light an important point here. This is not just about training. This is about performance also. When two citizens, one a resident and one a non-resident, have to walk down South Main Street and take on purveyors of narcotics who are selling to juveniles at Evil Lion Park, what does that tell you? These individuals up here have not been up there long enough to be falsified for the last five or six years. This is a change up here. This is a change up here. I understand, I understand that some of them are very concerned about positive change. But I think people need to realize that this just isn't about, it's not only about certification. This is about how reports are filed, whether, uh, whether situations are handled honestly, and whether or not the job is being done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'm gonna limit that to two, two, two times up here, so I just wanna make that clear at this point because it could go on and on and on. But yes, sir, you have a, you have a, and, and for everybody that doesn't need to get home tonight.
Mark Dean, 3115 Crescent Street. I think there's a bigger systemic problem. You went through multiple chiefs, multiple issues. It's not working. At some point, you got to fix it. Even Chief Banks, uh, Banks said he's been on decades, and they've always had problems with the police department. They need to look out, look for a change. I've been victimized at least five times in the two years I've lived in Crescent City, three of which the city handled, nothing got done. The last two, the sheriff's handled, and you had an arrest that spent forty-eight hours. That's performance. The city is not performant as it is. I lived here ten years, there's not a good job there. And I feel it exists, and I deserve the job to be done right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other news speakers?
Good evening. I'm Scott King. I live at 721 Lemon Avenue. Uh, has it, really, this already been pointed out, our problem is, already?
I know.
Our problem is that we don't know how to hire a chief, and when we do, we micromanage them to death. But thank you, Mr. Banks, for pointing that out. You know, um, I've been here a long time, and the chiefs that stayed here a long time were homegrown products. Last one was Johnson. Uh, I remember Chief Johnson could, uh, look at a video and say, oh, that's so-and-so's walk, and he went and arrested him. So rather than hiring a fella that is looking to put his feet up on the desk and retire in the vast capital of the world, we need to find a guy that's young enough and is invested that wants to stay and do a good job. Now, we have one of those, and I'm not here to bang a drum for our sergeant ward, but the fella wants the job, and until recently, he actually was pretty close to qualifying by all of our stipulations, but those were changed recently, as I understand. So, anyway, the point is, we need to do a better job about hiring chiefs. And then when we get them here, we need to quit micromanaging. You know, for, one of the big things that we point to, to say that we need to make those changes is savings. Okay, after year two, when you're talking about a budget of almost three-quarters of a million dollars, sixty grand, and gotta, don't, I hate saying this, sixty grand's not that much. It's nine percent. It's nine percent. Okay, so if you're looking at money, I think that's the wrong thing to, to look at. That's not what this is about. Also, what we've learned through this is it really appears like we're not getting all the services that we should right now from the sheriff's department. Um, most of the presentation, um, was already pointed out that most of those things we're already qualified for. I don't know if we're getting them. Uh, so let's not point to those as a reason to change. We should be getting them anyway. I thank you all for your service. I thank the sheriff's department for their service. And, um, the people want you to keep the police department. We really don't need to talk anymore. They want the police department to stay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me point you to the numbers. Okay, I am gonna give you your time, so I'll wait to make sure that we have any other additional speakers, first-time speakers, and also we have letters that need to be read. Um, we held those off to the end just because we have a lot of people here and knowing that there are times that they had. But do we have any other news speakers that would like to speak? Okay, um, Deb, would you please read comments that were asked, or letters that we received? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. The first letter is from Linda Young. And she says, "I am requesting that this be read at the next meeting, Thursday, December seventeen, at 6:00 AM. I totally support our Crescent City Police Department, and think that the commission even considering suspending our department and contracting with Platoon County Sheriff's Department probably unacceptable. Do some research into the PCSO budget and see the condition your department is in. The offer to replace our five officers with five officers is off-base. Our budget this year is for six officers, a chief, and the administrative assistant, which is eight employees. I won't bore you with the more statistics, with more statistics that you should be investigating yourself because I feel you will be hearing it in other comments." Linda Young. The next comes from Lee Vanderch, "To whom it may concern, my name is Lee Vanderch, and I am a Crescent City full-time resident. It is very concerning to me the way this IA investigation is going down along with the cover-up of our officer being hurt. It is appalling that I come so far this bit to allow this to be the outcome. And as I have said before, I feel your hands are tied by your manager, Mike Esposito. I'm sorry that Mark's life is being dragged through Facebook, but feel if you all handled this correctly, it would not have come to this point. It is very sad to see the citizens fighting for the justice you all should have taken care of. And with Mike as the city manager, those costs of our debt being a liability doesn't make sense. I'm sorry that your department's getting a liability doesn't make sense when due to Mike's decision, making our town can already be bankrupt. Also, after watching the budget proposal for Palatina, it shows they are already lacking enough staff and equipment. Why not fix what we have rather than damaging another town's force? Thank you for listening to my concerns, and may we get 2020 behind us quickly." Next comes from Cynthia Gravenor. "We want local police department in Crescent City response time of five minutes, not forty-five." Last, we have a letter from Mayor Carroll Furlong. "My name is Mayor Carroll Furlong, and I live just outside the city limits of Crescent City. I am writing in support of saving the Crescent City Police Department and to your citizens who are in earnest, support of its keeping. While my husband and I only moved here just seven years ago, we have yet no need to call them or the PCSO to our home, so I cannot speak to any response times either way. From what I observe, the CCPD has been at several large events with the President, Red White and Boom as an example, ensuring that all citizens have a good, yet safe time. The citizens are good, kind, intelligent, and caring men and women who truly care about the city, their fellow citizens, all the issues this entails, as with saving the police department. You may now know, you may know what I look like if you have seen it, Win Dixie, Save-A-Lot, Dollar General, Three Bananas, Icing Cherry Ope. You and I may have had brief contact if we met, and all were pleasant ones. You are a good group of people. You were elected by your friends and neighbors because they know you, know your values, and yet you want to dissolve for the CCPD. Whether this is your truest intent or not, this is what I have found in recent weeks. The citizens of CCPD want peace and safety, peace and safety and protection. This cannot be achieved with desolment, long-waited time shown, PCSO. Future businesses may not want to come into a town where no presence of police or safety and protection exists. The citizens have been quite hopeful about their saving of CCPD, and you are ignoring them. I wholeheartedly support them as one of our many county residents. I will be honest with you about what I said to those who are in support, paraphrasing. You were voted in, you can be voted out." That concludes the, um, emailed comments. I'm gonna have your act. The timer is set for one minute in effect, so you can finish off this. This actually goes to the, um, thing about the chief. What I'm concerned about is, especially since it's been brought up, that we can't really do a hybrid or partnership. If that's true, then I think it's been short-sighted to suspend the search for the chief on top of it, that the applicant for a chief should be part of this conversation because maybe some of these people that are in law enforcement that would apply for a chief would have some solutions to some of our problems and offer some solutions for what is affected in this department. By us not allowing or having somebody that's a professional, that does that kind of job, that may be able to fix the problems for Crescent City, we're basically having to tailwind the dog. We only have one side proposal. We don't have a person like the applicant that was out there for chief to come in and speak and see maybe what their solution would be to the problem. So I think we need to revisit having some of the chiefs or chiefs that were applicants. And by saying we're not gonna look for a chief and suspending the chief's search, that then I think we're actually discouraging people to apply. So then we have no option. Thank you. Thank you. And all, besides that with the budget, I think the new people that we've elected have been forward-thinking in their development in the, the idea of growing our city in a better place. So if it's the best thing for our city to keep the department, I think that the commission is gonna find a way that we're gonna have better growth in business, and we will find a front. Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner, does anybody have any comment? Do you have anything you would like to say before we adjourn them?
Well, actually, yes, I do. Just sorry you invited me. I was asking you. I was asking you. Yes, ma'am, you, that's, that's fine. A quick question. Um, whenever the police was assaulted, who responded to that call?
When the police were assaulted?
When the police of Crescent City was assaulted, who responded to her call? I wanna know, did the sheriff off himself, or did the Crescent City off itself?
Okay, that, that again is off topic tonight.
That's an off topic.
I, I understand, because we're not discussing that case. We're not discussing that case.
But if it's in public records, who responded to the call?
And if you would like, we'd be happy to take your name and number. We can contact you later and discuss that. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, commissioners, do we have any comments? Commissioner Vito?
Um, yeah, so one comment that I would like to make echoes, um, some things I've heard said by Brett Peterson and others. Um, I just have a list here, I think, that I think we need to consider. I'm really not sure how we got into this posture. Any process of contacting with the sheriff should not be rushed. We should not be really talking about entering into a contact in the middle of a situation of stress. I mean, our responsibility to the city is to negotiate, um, not to put out a cry for help, um, because we have not managed our own affairs. So this has been a great forum. I appreciate everything that the sheriff has thrown a well and that whole staff has done. We have learned a lot. We have learned a lot from the citizens. Um, but really, a lot of what we have talked to about tonight, um, a lot of it is based on emotion. This kind of proposal has to be based on a financial analysis. Um, I think that, I'm not, I'm running this too much. Okay, so, um, a couple of parts to it. Law enforcement is expensive. As Commissioner Banks has pointed out, the city of Crescent City is very close to the middle cap. Um, we have to think long and hard between what we want and can be afforded. And, um, there are some issues. We, I mentioned them before, have it on the list. We will be left, for example, with the city pension plan. We have to study things very carefully, um, look into things like, what will it cost us to, um, contract and no longer have a police department that we saw to fund the pension plan? Um, many years our officers don't get raises, but the sheriff's office, officers, I believe, do get raises, so we would be putting ourselves in full responsibility to pay for that, as Ms. White mentioned. To a certain extent, although we were getting high quality, we have to think of the implications financially of losing control of that, of our budget. So a lot of it is about the finances. That, if you cannot manage the finances of the city, you do not exist. We are a municipal corporation. It is possible for us to hire an interim chief, as someone has said. Um, the Ford Police Chiefs Association keeps a list of interim chiefs who will not want jobs, but will come in and assist you. And I'm really wondering why we did not look at that option. Especially when the news release that was issued on, I guess, December fifth, said that one reason the attorneys recommended that we suspend all our officers is because we did not have a police chief. We should get an interim police chief, and, um, I thought it was an interesting idea that we should reopen the police chief search to get advice from your applicants. That's interesting, but that's more what an interim chief does. You don't really open up, um, a job search when you don't know what you're doing, um, and your officers are on suspension, and ask the applicant how you should do things. So a little bit of a dicey situation. Um, I think we need to look at the process that other cities have followed, and we need to investigate very carefully what our financial liability would be if this situation did not work out because the back car sheriff can change. Sheriff DeRose has been a purr for four years. We don't know what his plans will be after four years. So, so, a significant financial analysis that has to be done. But I am very concerned, um, you know, about what process we're gonna follow. I'm concerned about the information that the other commissioners are receiving. Um, we, I have heard very different explanations over time for why our officers were suspended. The explanations in print and given verbally, last meeting and this meeting, are not acceptable. Um, and I'm concerned about our ongoing liability and the burden on the sheriff for paying salaries when they are not, they are not working, um, and as well the burden of charge. So, um, I have, for the rest of the transmission, I laid out my thoughts here. I want to put this on the record and share it with them, with you, and the mayor. If you can't talk, you can review, or if they're on the record, I'll have copies to the record. But anybody else can have a copy, depending whether. So, I think we should consider an interim chief, and I think we look at, well, what we're gonna do.
Thank you, Commissioner Vito. Commissioner Burton, do you have any comments?
Everybody thinks that we're rushing to judgment here, and I don't, I don't think we are. Um, Christmas is coming, the New Year's coming, a COVID vaccine issue finally. We have some good news, I hope, on the horizon. But we have time right now to go home tonight, take a breath, have a nice holiday, enjoy our families. Our next meeting will be in, you know, I think it's January fourteenth. There's a lot to consider. There's a lot going on. There's, I think there is, I don't know all of the answers that I need right now. Um, but I would like you all to have the confidence that the commission will come up with the right decision when the time comes. It gives us an opportunity, as Commissioner Banks said, to, you know, follow the information, follow the lead, sort of see, make sure that we, uh, you know, are checking our list and... I'm checking our list and seeing if it's naughty or nice, or whatever we gotta do. But we do have time. We do have time. I think it's over, and please allow us and give us that time.
Thank you. Commissioner Webb?
I want to say just one thing to say that you did well. I do wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight. If you agree, your down the road would not have a wider, thank you for coming anyway. Especially thanks, Sheriff Deloche, and the whole family here. This has not been fun twice, not once. Thank you so much for coming and giving us all the encouragement.
Thank you. Commissioner Banks?
I want to thank everybody for coming down, and the sheriff, especially, for coming down. And I want to thank him for protecting our citizens until we come up with a solution.
Okay, we have one, go ahead, because I allowed others, so.
I just want to say one thing, that Mr. Esposito is a great city manager, and Mark Harmon was a fine chief. The fact that they're throwing him under the bus. You've heard of Miami Dolphins, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, they had a great quarterback, but they had no team. I mean, it was like eighty-five to four on one of their games, and that's how I felt. The officers are under audit for a reason. Y'all just didn't make the vote, okay? I see that.
Thank you. Thank you.
With that, I want to thank everybody, the residents that are watching us tonight in the comfort of their warm homes. I want to thank all of you for enduring this, for sitting here, for being so civil, for being understanding, for being open-minded. I want to thank the sheriff, and Colonel Wells, and your entire staff for all that you've done and for the time that you've afforded us to make sure that when we go forward with this decision, that we make what we feel is in the best interest of Crescent City. And with that, I adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for y'all's time.
Thank you. Man, you know, you need to grow some hair. I looked at you sitting up, I'm like, I need to. But then after you sat there, well, I got it.
I got a little hair here.
Come back there, I think it was a hair.
Yeah, I lost my hair too.